Council call them in order for the record is August 2023 at four thirty three P M will begin this afternoon's work session with roll call tenants.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Stryder, Councilman Overton.
You're.
Councilwoman Perrow, Councilman Cavanagh, Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here. First time up is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I move adoption of the agenda as published.
Second. The motion is second to adopt the agenda is there in discussion? If not, on favor, see if by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Pose nay, guys have it and the agenda is adopted.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I move that we approve the consent agenda and for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest.
Have a motion of second to approve the consent agendas are in discussion? If not, on favor, see if by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Pose nay, guys have it and the consent agenda is agreed to. There are no items moved from the consent agenda. So we'll move on to item thirteen.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
For Idaho code seven four dash two zero six one C, I move that we go into executive session.
Have a motion of second to go into executive session. Is there any discussion? If not, court color all.
Any of us, Mayor Stryder.
Aye.
Overton.
Aye.
Perrow. Cavanagh.
Aye.
Borton.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye. All eyes motion carries and we'll move into executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we come out of executive session.
Second.
I have a motion second to come out of his action on favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post day, yes, have it and we're out of executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adjourn our work session.
Motion to adjourn all favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post name. Post name. Yes, have it. We adjourned.
Council will call the meeting in order for the record. It is August 8, 2023 at 6:00 PM. We'll begin this evening's Rager City Council Meeting with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilwoman Strater, Councilman Overton, Councilwoman Pearl, Councilman Cavanagh, Councilman Borton, Councilman Holmwood, Mayor Simison.
Here. Next up is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd all please rise and join us in the pledge. Next up will be our community invocation, which will be delivered by Pastor Benny Hankey. If you would all please join us in the community invocation or take this as a moment of personal silence reflection.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Thank you again for the opportunity to come and lead the invocation. Let me pray. God, we thank you for this evening. We acknowledge you as our Creator who put the breath in our lungs to do the work that you've provided for us at this day. And so I ask humbly that by your Spirit, you would lead the City Council, that you would give them wisdom, discernment, courage to choose the right as they conduct their business. I thank you for their service and their leadership for our city. We ask humbly that you would help us to be a city whose neighbors love one another, serve one another, that you would guard and protect those who serve us on the front lines, in the police force, in the fire, in the medics. God, as our teachers and principals and students prepare for back to school this coming week, we ask that you would bless our school year this year. We ask all this through, for your glory and our good through Christ. Amen. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holmwood.
I move that we adopt the agenda as published.
I have a motion of second to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Yes, have it. And the agenda is adopted as published. Mr. Clerk, do we have anyone sign up under public forum?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay. Then with that, we will move right on to our action items for this evening. First item up is a public hearing for proposed fall 2023 fee schedule of the Meridian Parks and Recreation Department. We'll turn this over to Mr. White.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Like Mr. Mayor just said, these are, the fees in front of you are for the 2023 Fall Activity Guide. With that, I will stand for questions.
And for the record, that was opening the public hearing on this topic if I would make that clear. Council, any questions for staff? Okay. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, we have anybody sent to provide testimony on this item?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay. Is there anybody present would like to come forward and provide testimony on the proposed Parks and Recreation fees? Or if you're online, you can use the raise your hand feature. Since two of the people online are in this room, that leaves us only one online. See no one coming forward. I have a motion. Councilman Cavanagh.
We close the public hearing on the proposed fall 2023 fee schedule. Second.
Motion of second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Yes, have it. And the public hearing is closed. Next item up is Resolution Number 23-2400. Pass the court to read this resolution by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a resolution adopting the fall 2023 fee schedule of the Meridian Parks and Recreation Department, authorizing the Meridian Parks and Recreation Department to collect such fees and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Yeah. Councilman Cavanagh.
We approve Resolution Number 23-2400.
I have a motion of second to prove Resolution Number 23-2400. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Yes, have it. And the resolution is agreed to. Next item up is item three, which is a public hearing for proposed updates to mayor and city council compensation. I'll turn this over to Mr. Neri. The renew and refine, Mr. Neri.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So before each night for the public is a public hearing on two proposed ordinances. Both these ordinances address compensation for both the mayor and the city council over the next two calendar years. So for 2024 and 2025, by Idaho Code, we're required no, no less than 75 days before the election to set the compensation level for the next following fiscal or following calendar years. We've had a citizens committee since about 2005, and we've had varying members of that committee. We've had some continuity, though. We've had some members on there for at least 10 years, and we've taken both business leaders in the community as well as commissioners and former council members as members of this committee. And they help evaluate the compensation for both the mayor and the council. And they use comparisons like other cities in Idaho of like size. Again, it's pretty tough in Idaho. After you get past about the top five cities, the numbers get a lot smaller in population for a lot of cities around the state. And once you get past the top 10, it really drops off significantly. But they do look at other cities around the area as to what compensation they provide to their mayor and council. And they also looked at a lot of other factors when they met this recommendations. They were looking at the, and the enticement of people to participate in the elective process. The fact that it does take a great deal of time and commitment for a council member or for the mayor, and that we want to be attractive to people in the community to want to participate. And sometimes, you know, if you have to consider a secondary job and giving up a secondary job to serve on the council, there's an impact financially to doing that. And so they were looking at a lot of reasons why they felt some adjustments were done two years ago, or at the last election cycle, for the last two years. They felt another adjustment was necessary, both for the mayor's compensation as well as the, the council. Again, the committee does a very good job in trying to make sure they steer away from the personality side, and they're looking really strongly at the positions, what they, what they believe as a citizen group, that the mayor of our community should be compensated. What they believe a council member on this council should be compensated out of this community. So they try very hard to separate the personality of it and really look at the position, what their expectation, they think that they, as members of the public, want to see and people sitting in an elected seat up here. So their recommendation in front of you, this is a public hearing, as we stated, for the public to weigh in as to what those changes would be. And so unless you had any other questions, that's kind of how we got to where we are.
Thank you, Mr. Neri. Council, questions for staff? Okay. This is public hearing. Mr. Clerk, do we have anyone sent to provide testimony on this item?
Mr. Mayor, we had no one sign up in advance.
If there's anybody present that would like to come forward and provide testimony on this item, either in person or online, please use the raise your hand feature. See no one coming forward. Council, what's your desire to continue this to next week? Councilman Cavanagh.
Council's supportive. I think it's appropriate to continue the public hearing for another week. I'll public to provide another one more opportunity to provide feedback, either written or in person, and I would be supportive of continuing this.
I have a motion of second to continue the public hearing to next week. Is there further discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, nay. Yes, have it.
Just wanted to clarify, but it would be a third reading next week because it would be the last week we would have to, okay.
Correct. Decision will have to be made next week with a closed
Yes.
process. So with that, we will continue the public hearing to next week, but we will move on down and forward, which is the second reading of ordinance number 23-2024. Pass the court to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's an ordinance amending Title I, Chapter 7, Section 9 of Meridian City Code regarding City Council Members' Compensation, providing a savings clause and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Is there anybody that would like this ordinance read in its entirety? Seeing none, we will see that third reading to next week. So we will move on to item five, which is the second reading of ordinance number 23-2026. That's quick to read that, or just by title.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. It's an ordinance amending Title I, Chapter 6, Section 5 of the Meridian City Code regarding mayor's compensation, providing a savings clause and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Is there anybody that'd like this ordinance read in its entirety? Seeing none, we will continue at the third reading next week. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to item six, which is a public hearing for Drift with Subdivision H 2023-0021. We will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members, members of the council. Just a moment here. First land use item before you tonight is a request for a conditional use permit and a combined preliminary and final plat. This property consists of 9.01 acres of land, its own CC, and it's located at 870 West Eustick Road at the northwest corner of West Eustick Road and North Venable Avenue. This property was annexed back in 2007 with the requirement of a development agreement, which was later amended to allow for the development of approximately 60 multifamily residential units and a minimum of two commercial buildings per the approved conceptual development plan. A certificate of zoning compliance was recently approved for site improvements, including an internal shared access driveway with detached sidewalk and associated landscaping and storm drainage. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation is mixed-use community. A conditional use permit is requested for a multifamily residential development consisting of 57 town home style dwelling units on the northern 4.81 acres of the site in the CC zoning district. A gross density of 12 units per acre is proposed consistent with the net, excuse me, consistent with the density desired of 6 to 15 units per acre in the MUC designation. The proposed development plan is consistent with the conceptual development plan and associated provisions in the existing development agreement. Access is proposed by a drive aisle that runs east-west through the site from North Venable Avenue, a collector's street at the east boundary and North Buckstone Avenue, a local street, the stubs at the northern boundary of the site. The development agreement requires a cross-access easement to be granted to the property abutting the southwest property boundary prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the western commercial pad or when the adjacent parcel develops, whichever occurs first. Compliance with the specific use standards for multifamily residential developments is required, which includes private and common open space and amenities as well as parking. A minimum of 80 square feet of private usable open space is required per unit. A minimum of 0.46 of an acre of common open space is required. A total of 0.55 acre of qualified open space is proposed, exceeding the minimum standard. Additional open space totaling 0.53 of an acre is proposed, which doesn't meet the design standards for qualified open space, but it does provide an additional benefit. All multifamily residential projects over 20 units are required to provide at least one common grassy area integrated into the site design, allowing for general activities of all ages. That is a minimum of 5,000 square feet in area, which shall increase proportionally as the number of units increase and be commensurate with the size of the development as determined by the decision-making body, which is city council. As staff's recommendation, the commission recommends a minimum 14,250 square feet or 0.33 of an acre of common grassy area is provided commensurate with the size of the development based on 250 square feet per unit. A revised open space exhibit was submitted as shown that depicts one 5,283 square foot common grassy area and other common grassy areas totaling 16,634 square feet or 0.38 of an acre, which meets and exceeds the recommendation. A minimum of three amenities are required based on the number of units proposed with one from each category. The applicant proposes a clubhouse picnic area with a shade structure and a children's play structure in accord with these standards. Based on 13 two-bedroom units and 44 three-bedroom units, a minimum of 164 off-street parking spaces are required, including guest parking with 57 of those in a covered carport or garage. A total of 194 spaces are proposed with 84 of those covered, which exceeds a minimum standard by 30 spaces. Based on the parking provided, a minimum of eight bicycle parking spaces are required. Conceptual building elevations were submitted as shown for the proposed town home style structures consisting of 15 two-story structures in three and four unit clusters containing a mix of two and three bedroom units with a minimum of 1,250 square feet per unit. Building materials appear to consist of stucco and horizontal siding in two different colors with stone veneer accents. These elevations are generally consistent with those included in the existing development agreement as required. Final design is required to comply with the design standards and the architectural standards manual and will be reviewed for compliance with these standards with the designer view applications. Compliance with the building code requirements for separation between structures within the development is also required. A combined preliminary and final plat is proposed as shown to subdivide the property consisting of one residential building lot and two commercial building lots and one other lot on 9.01 acres of land. The existing irrigation ditch along the southern boundary of the site is required to be piped with development. The commission recommended approval of the proposed applications with conditions in the staff report. I'll go over a summary of the commission hearing. Mike and John Wardle, Brighton Development testified in favor. There was no one testifying in opposition. Patrick McCabe commented on the application. Written testimony was received, a letter and a petition submitted by Jessica Lords with 300 Written testimony was received. Um, a letter and a petition submitted by Jessica Lords with three hundred and seventy-three signatures in opposition. Kristi McCabe and Mike Wardle, Brighton Development, the applicant stated that he was in agreement with the staff report except for the requirement of a multi-use pathway, which he requests to be removed. Key issues of discussion, uh, there is already too much traffic congestion in this area. A traffic signal is needed at Eustick and Venable against vehicular connection to the north to Woodburn subdivision for safety reasons, uh, children and traffic. Concern parking will overflow into Venable. Too many apartments in this area already, et cetera. Safety concerns pertaining to added traffic, trying to get out onto Eustick Road and pedestrians trying to cross Eustick Road. Removal of the requirement for a public pathway to be provided across the site and reason for removal. Possible alternate location for pathway. And finally, desire for a traffic signal to be provided at Eustick and Venable and a safe pedestrian crossing across Eustick Road. The issues of discussion by the commission, um, they were in favor of the mix of residential and commercial uses, the transition to existing residential uses and the town home style units proposed. The commission made the following changes to the staff recommendation. At the applicant's request and with concurrence from the Parks Department, they deleted the conditions pertaining to the requirement of a multi-use pathway on the site. And those are reflected in the conditions in the recommendations document you have. And they included a requirement for a private pathway to be provided along the commercial portion of the development to the southwest boundary of the site for interconnectivity. And that is also reflected in the conditions. There are no outstanding issues for council tonight, and there has been no written testimony received since the commission hearing. The applicant is here to testify on the application tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Sonia. Council questions for the applicant? Here's for staff. Council McCavener?
So just a quick question, because so much of the feedback and written in at the planning and zoning commission was about traffic. Did we or have we ever explored sending this application to our transportation commission to get any feedback from them? And if so, did they offer any feedback on this particular application?
Um, Mayor, uh, councilman, no, we did not.
Okay. Thank you.
Also, there's questions for staff? Okay, then with the app, go ahead and come forward.
Good evening, Mayor. Counsel, for the record, my name is John Wardle, twenty-nine twenty-nine West Navigator. Um, Meridian Idaho eight three six four two. Just gonna rejoin here so I can share my screen. Can I scare, share my screen? No, you're fine. Good evening, uh, Mayor and Council. Glad to be back again this evening. This project actually commenced back in two thousand and twenty-one when we came before this council to uh, request the modification of the development agreement. Um, and this is the next step in that process, which includes a conditional use permit and a preliminary and final plat. As Sonia mentioned, the, the location here is at the intersection of Venable, which is a collector road and Eustick, which is an arterial um, within a stone's throw, although not directly adjacent to Settlers Park, but very close to Settlers Park. Um, halfway between Linder and Meridian Road. The property is zone CC. And this uh, depicts both the conference of plan and the zoning map. A little bit closer here showing the nine acres of property that is uh, before you deny it for conditional use permit and preliminary final plat. And one more close-up of this. Before you tonight, we are specifically requesting a preliminary final plat, which is for four lots. And I'll get into that in just a second and a conditional use permit for the residential portion of this project. Back in two thousand and twenty-one, when we brought this to you, we had proposed uh, two commercial lots and fifty-seven townhomes. And so this is consistent with that modified development agreement. Like because of the process, we are here for the conditional use permit part of this as well. As I mentioned, the townhomes represent about four point eight one acres. The overall plat is nine point zero one acres. As Sonia mentioned, the, on the conditional use permit part of this, there are fifty-seven townhomes, all two stories in nature. Each of the homes has a garage as well as parking in the driveway there. And we've also added additional parking spaces um, around the little clubhouse amenity and parking on one side of the road. Um, earlier this year, maybe it was end of last year now, we finished the uh, the drive aisle, which goes east to west and put the improvements in so that the future user of the south, which is St. Luke's, can come forward at the time that they determine necessary or that they're ready to do that. And we also have uh, development applications with your uh, development department to do site improvements that would represent the townhomes here. The overall project will include a small clubhouse for um, residents here, be about two thousand square feet. We will have a tot lot as well, and we have a, a couple of grassy areas which are spread through the project. Um, of note, the, we have both what we would call alley-loaded homes um, on the interior here. And then we also have on the perimeter, these will be front-loaded homes. We'll get into the kind of elevations here in just a second. This is the exhibit that Sonia showed depicting all the open space in the project and compliance with the open space requirements. This also shows represents, even though we are a residential project, we are in a CC zone. So there's a twenty-five foot setback uh, required within the CC zone against residential. And so that's represented on the north and on the west side of the property. This shows the different types of homes that will be built. They are in a series of three and four unit buildings. Uh, like I mentioned, there are alley and front-loaded homes. The, on the perimeter, they're generally the front-loaded and the blue represented here would be the internal or the alley-loaded homes. Uh, the preliminary and final plat's pretty simple. It's really four lots. We have one lot, which is represented here in green as the residential lot. The drive access and storm drainage, which has already been complete, is the blue lot. And then we have two commercial lots, which would be the future commercial uh, that St. Luke's owns. We do concur with the staff report and recommendation uh, that came out of the planning zoning commission. We respectfully uh, request that the city council approve both the conditional use permit and the preliminary final plat. And with that, I stand for any questions that you might have tonight.
Thank you. Council and questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor?
That's one pro.
Mr. Wardle, um, so I'm going to ask the same question I ask on every one of these applications that have the private streets. Um, first, what will be the width of the private street? And then second, is there a location where utility vehicles can park? Um, furniture delivery, Norco trucks, Amazon trucks, all of the above that daily move through our neighborhoods? Where do they go to drop off, what they need to drop off for the residents if the streets are really too narrow to have, have them go through?
Mr. Mayor, um, council member Perro, um, it's a good question. So there's, there's a couple of different standards that we have here on this project. The drive aisle, which is kind of shown here in the middle, let me go to um, the drive aisle um, through the middle here, we actually designed that so it would allow for parking on both sides of the road. And I believe um, we're next down in a couple of places. There's obviously no parking there, but both sides of that east-west drive aisle are wide enough for parking on the road and um, cars to pass back and forth. So there's no, there's no limitation. When we get interior to the project, we're basically a twenty-nine foot back-to-back. So that would allow parking on one side. The parking on the one side would be, in this exhibit, would be around the alleys. Um, the other side where we have driveways, obviously you, you know, there's, they're pretty close together, so we wouldn't be parking on that side. But each of the homes that are represented here, in addition to their garage, have driveways that can be parked in as well. So unlike perhaps a, a typical apartment project where uh, those garages are detached from the units, in this case, they're attached as well as the driveways before those. So we do have a lot of extra parking here um, around the clubhouse area. Um, and the additional parking on driveways and on-street parking that would be available here. Uh, we did work through the dimensions so that we could comply with the need for additional parking, but also allow for uh, whether it's life safety or the utilities or, you know, deliveries to be able to use these streets and not uh, be encumbered.
Mr. Mayor, Phil.
That's one pro.
So if I'm summarizing you correctly, um, the street locations that are directly next to the um, the front of the alley load, so where they would get out of vehicle and walk to the front door, those, those are all going to be areas where parking will be permitted, but not the locations where a driveway uh, to the home is um, is accessible, correct? So, so where are the alley loads? The back of the alley loads, that there will not be parking in that section?
Mr. Mayor, uh, council member Perro, um, through the alley, the alley is wide enough that cars can go in and out, and there are driveway prints in the alley as well. But um, on the front of those homes, um, you would be allowed to park on the street um, in front, both on the north side and on the south side of that alley section. So um, naturally on the outside where we have driveways, there's really just not enough room to be able to park your car there in front. We felt like the alley side was the appropriate place for that to occur.
Mr. Mayor?
Council, I'm sure.
Thanks for being here. Um, talk to us a little bit about the location of the open space. Uh, it does sort of stand out to me that it's kind of a shop to the side. It's not very centralized. Just help, help us understand that a little bit.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, council member Strater. Um, as you recall, perhaps um, from the uh, modification of the development agreement um, in this particular area and with your um, um, comprehensive plan, as it talks about these mixed-use neighborhoods, they talked about having uh, some plaza areas and having some, a focal center of the project. Um, we've, we've always shown that this little clubhouse element, which is shown here on the right-hand side, would be the focal point coming in to the project. Um, we, we did also look at how we could uh, create some other open space. And that's why the majority of that grassy area is central up here to the north, and there'll be a little bit of a gazebo up there as well. Um, but the concentration of the open space and that clubhouse where mail delivery will happen, where the tot lot is um, and where residents can, can come together is really there at the entry of uh, of this neighborhood on Venable, just off of Eustick. Keep in mind that is four acres, little between almost five acres. It's not a huge project. I, I do know that when we do much larger projects, we um, we are trying to distribute the open space throughout. But given the size of this, um, we're not talking great distances in terms of walking. We've ensured that we have sidewalks throughout, so it's very easy for people to get to either the little clubhouse element or up to the open space to the north. So we, we did think about it. We did look at it. Uh, we didn't tuck it back into the back rear corner. Um, we also have an area which is a storm drainage area, which probably would be grassy, but that's actually excluded from this calculation. It's not part of the residential piece, and that's off to one side as well.
You talked just a little bit about that storm drainage area and what it's going to be like. Um, we've seen them done poorly and we've seen them done well, so.
Mr. Mayor, council member Strater. Um, it, obviously, you know, the key to storm drainage areas are um, can we keep them maintained? Uh, there is a requirement, the city, that um, you know, we, we do need to have grass in there. It can't be just a sandy bottom. Um, we did do a storm drainage basin here because if you go too much further, deeper, um, the sewage beds just don't work. Um, this, this is one of those areas where a storm drainage um, can occur. This is not intended to be a um, a retention basin. It's just simply a detention that, uh, that short-term event, it will capture it and then it will dissipate out. Uh, very similar to other storm drainage facilities like we've done out in Century Farm, where we have similar um, separation issues between the bottom of those and uh, ordinary high groundwater.
Mr. Mayor?
That's what we share.
Thank you. Um, yes, maybe one more. If you could just speak to the, you know, ACHD staff report and some of the concerns about traffic. The road is rated as a D. Acceptable level of service is you're better. It sounds like there was a planned roundabout that now will never come to fruition. That's very unfortunate. You know, where could people expect a crossing one day? You know, help us understand how the neighborhood's going to handle you know, the trips coming through here.
Just one second here. Um, Mr. Mayor, council member Strater, uh, you are correct. Once upon a time, ACHD had anticipated or had considered a roundabout at the intersection of Venable, which is the collector and Eustick, which is the arterial. Um, over time, uh, projects have been approved and the right-of-way needed for such a improvement are unable to happen. Um, the, there's projects on the south now um, that are there. Uh, in, in fact, it was supposed to have been picked up earlier in the staff report. Uh, they did amend their staff report showing that that's no longer a condition. But ACHD is saying that this would be the location of a signal. The question becomes is when does that signal happen? One of the things that doesn't exist today on Venable, at least on our side of the property, is there, there are no sidewalks. There's no curb. There's no gutter. It's not improved. So we are improving that. Um, so that part of the roadway will be finished coming down to Venable. And so Venable will be a complete intersection. Um, we've been told by ACHD with the completion or the work that we do, um, they really will be able to come back and do a signal at some point in the future. It, but it's not designated at this point in time. Um, that perhaps is a question um, or a conversation that could occur between the city and them. Um, but yes, a signal would be at this location, and this would be where um, the natural crossing would occur across Eustick.
Mr. Mayor?
Council McCavener?
Wardle, appreciate, I'll stick kind of with some of the conversations about Venable and a little bit related to open space. So, so I think the location of your, of your clubhouse seems to make a, a lot of sense. A part that was a little bit of a head-scratcher for me, and I think you can probably maybe paint a bigger picture, is the location of the tot lot right there next to Venable. You know, I've got a, a seven-year-old, and I always feel like every time I'm at the park, any of our parks. Where's Lincoln at? Where's Lincoln at, right? They're running around their plane. And so I worried a little bit about location of the tot lot in such close proximity to Venable. And so maybe give me a little flavor about what you're doing to make sure that this neighborhood's little Lincolns don't run into Venable and we get an unfortunate accident.
Mr. Mayor, um, appreciate the question. Uh, council member Cavaner? It, it is a fair question, and because Venable is a collector, there are requirements that we have. There's two things that we could do. One is a berm. Um, the other one is a fence. And our, we were anticipating this location, we would end up doing a fence that would keep that directly flowing into Venable. We, we are detaching the sidewalk as well, so the sidewalk is not right on Venable. So we do have the eight-foot planner. We'll have the five-foot sidewalk. Uh, we, we will be set off from it. Um, if you go to the north, uh, there is a fence that exists currently with those neighbors over there. Uh, we did look at putting the, the tot lot actually over in the other area. Uh, but we felt like being closer to where people would be coming to get their mail or gathering those type of things, that we just felt like putting those things together made more sense. Could that be flexed? We could. We could, we could move that. Um, but based on the, the amenities that we put in here, we felt like that's where uh, it made the most sense. And we could keep protected um, residents with a fence or some other element that would keep them directly off of Venable.
That's right. That's okay, man.
Feedback, and I think you guys always really put safety in all of your projects. So not a criticism, but I again, it's probably a preference thing. I, I think it's location at the other piece of open space to me seems a more appropriate location. It just, it takes away the opportunity, I think, for potential conflict to happen between the motor.
Mr. Mayor, council member Cavaner, um, we do have one more step in the process after this, is there's a certificate of zoning compliance. Um, with that feedback, uh, we could look at that and come up with a solution, perhaps of, of moving that over there. Um, but we're, we're open to that suggestion.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Wardle, on Venable, as you're
Mr. Wardle, on Venable, as you're coming out to Eustick Road. I know we, where I live is just a mile to the west, and the right turn lane or right and left turn lane is wide enough to accommodate cars going both directions. So if someone's turning left, and I know there's lots of traffic on Eustick, they're going to be waiting there for a while, but there's still enough room to make a right turn. You just have to pull out a little bit so you can see, and then, then you move on, so you don't get a big stacking. Is there room for a right? And it's not officially marked right and left. It's just wide enough to accommodate two, two, two vehicles side by side. Is that accommodate two vehicles side by side in, in the right-hand lane, the southbound lane?
Mr. Mayor. If, if I have the question correct, Councilmember Hoagland, you're asking is whether basically coming southbound on Venable, is there room for both a right-hand movement and a left-hand movement or through movement? Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Mr. Mayor, as it stands right now, the intersection really, because the curbs are there, really just allows two cars, whether one's coming up or down. Now, there is a possibility that that accommodation could be made when ACHD looks at that. I will note that one of the things that they requested of us with the commercial use coming in was to create a center turn lane, which we are doing. We are creating a center turn lane, so a left-hand turn can come into this. We believe there's probably sufficient room that if they wanted to do that dedicated right or the left through, that's possible, and maybe that's an item they look at when the, the signals come in in the future. But at this point, they have not indicated that that would be the configuration.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman.
Yeah, I, I would like to be looked at, just because, you know, the park usage, there are times of traffic when ballgames are out, reserve for Twins softball games. You know, it, we have people coming and going at kind of in, in bulk, if you will. So having, having that ability to at least have two lanes on that southbound, so people aren't held up that want to turn right, and, and they're able to go left, sit in their own side, if you will. And through, I don't know how many would go through. You'd have to pick a lane, decide, oh, I'm, I'm going straight. But having that ability, I think ACHD, I would encourage them to, to take a look at that, just to help facilitate the traffic flow.
Okay, making that note.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilboard.
To close the loop on that, that's something that, and it could be added as part of this application and plat. I would risk ACHD incorporates it in 14 years. But I, boy, I think Councilman Hoagland's really spot on. That single car left turn will just shut it down for a long time, or be encouraged to take a really risky, quick move. It's stressed out people behind him, so is there a reason that even though it's not required by ACHD, you don't have two lanes that allow you to go left and someone to go right at the same time on the Eustick?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Borton. Just need to go back to ACHD and ask that question. I mean, they're, they're ultimately would be the ones that would review that. So I just need to say, can we do this and see what their response is? My, my guess is they, I wouldn't see that they would object to it. We obviously are creating a turning situation there already. The, the design that we have here come up at Venable is based off of the curb returns that are there today. There's, it doesn't continue up on the west side of Venable on our side, so we were, you know, expanding, making the connection happen, and that's the intersection that's there today. Obviously, they will have some work that they need to do in the future, but it's, it's a good question, and we can ask them and, and work through that, that request.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilboard.
Helpful in those discussions if the city requires it or something almost, I mean, it just is close, really to help sort of to nudge it along. It just seems like, you know, when you have a, an opportunity to mitigate an aggressive left-hand turn onto an arterial, and Eustick's intended to be crowded in perpetuity, so I, that's a really good observation by Councilman Hoagland, that maybe there's an opportunity that we can help you have ACHD agree and accept that as a, a safety element.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Borton, perhaps instead of the word require, because that could open up a, a moment where nothing can happen. Strongly encourage, and we can work with ACHD to see if we can come up with that solution with this project at this time.
Maybe piggyback on that. I mean, if a light goes in, it really nullifies that to a certain extent, because you're going to have a controlled left-hand turn when it tells you you can turn. So is it either or, or both, or, although I'm, I'm sitting here trying to rack my brains about where, the only one I can think of is like Costco over in Boise, where they have a, a right lane out, and everyone else essentially turns left. In that regards, I'm trying to think of other situations locally on a, not a main road, where we have a right and a left, and I'm sure they exist. I just can't think of it, but that can be part of the conversation with ACHD as well. I don't know which would be, be preferred. Light, land, both, neither.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman.
To that point, we're, we're getting a light, I think, in 2025 for our exit onto Eustick. And, and because it was all new at the time, they designed it that way. We do have a center island-type thing, but with that room on the right-hand side, it makes it easy for when that light goes in, there's going to be a right turn lane and left turn lane. So we don't have stacking. We have office, dental offices on front area, and then, of course, it's a very large development that comes behind it, and that cuts all the way through to 10 miles, so people sometimes use that to go through. So we have a lot of traffic through there, so it just really adds a nice ability for flow, and that you just aren't, aren't stuck. So, yeah, again, I would be strongly encourage ACHD to take a look at, just because it would, Eustick is carrying a large volume of traffic and always will. So it's just one of those things that will help, help everyone who are trying to get onto Eustick Road, that ability to do so in a little more timely manner than some of the longer waits that we have.
Council, additional questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
Just, I guess, a question. I, I just asked a clerk if ACHD was on, but it sounds like they're not, unfortunately. It would be great if they could attend these, you know, a representative. I know it's difficult, but just a comment that it really would help, you know, facilitate these conversations to have a representative from ACHD here, and we'll have to give them that feedback. I'm a little bit disappointed, just because I feel like there, there was somehow, you know, ball got dropped between their original plans for a roundabout, and then now this intersection. I'd like to understand the timing of that, so that's probably my biggest hang-up at this point.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
Thank you. And I'm sure you have read through the public comments that we've received, and one of the concerns was regarding the private lane that will connect subdivision to the north. If it's me, I'm not driving through this project to get to that subdivision or to go through there to cut through, because you, you have very narrow drive aisles. It's probably 20 miles an hour, and you don't want to be driving by people's driveways. But with, if the intersection improvements don't come about as anticipated, that could very well be a possibility that folks use this as a cut-through. And so can, can you just verbally address for us your thoughts on whether you would, you know, put up some signage that says this area is for residents? Or it's my anticipation is this, these are going to be rented. And so, because these are private lanes, I, I wondered if there might be a way to mitigate some of those concerns through traffic slowing and also some signage. So if you could address that, that would be great.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Perro. I mean, absolutely. Everybody, I think, is concerned about cut-through traffic. If, if you do look at the nature of this project, however, and where it sits, it's unlikely that the cut-through traffic is coming from Driftwood into that neighborhood. It's really flowing the other direction. ACHD wanted to maintain and has required that this access be opened and left open. And so obviously, Woodburn, when it was developed, I think in 2005, 2006, that's when that step street went in, and that's when, and so we've connected to it, and that condition has continued to be there regarding signage and speeds and things like that. We're, we're happy to, and we've done this in other projects about, in particular, probably, probably the issue that comes up most is on construction traffic. When new projects come in with existing, we can, we can take care of that and also figure out something that would be appropriate for good neighbor interfaces. But in terms of this cut-through the other direction, I just don't know that there would be a lot of traffic coming out of Driftwood into Woodburn, back to Venable, when they can get directly to Venable, or they're getting over to the park. There's just not a, a path or a direction besides neighbor to neighbor. Dropping something off to a neighbor that lives in another place, but cutting through Woodburn from Driftwood is, it will happen, but I think the, the reverse is going to happen a lot more, where Woodburn would come through Driftwood.
Mr. Mayor, have follow-up?
Councilman Pro.
I agree. That, that's how I would, that's what I would anticipate as well. And I just wanted to give you an opportunity to address it publicly. It, I, I'm familiar with Venable, and, and I believe if it doesn't go directly to Meridian Road, but you can take that through and exit out Meridian Road, I think you go through a couple of subdivisions. And so depending on what happens with the Venable-Eustick intersection, you could really honestly potentially see people cutting through a variety of locations in here. And so, yeah, the intersection conversation we've already touched on, it's really important. But whether, whether folks are coming from Woodburn through Driftwood or vice versa, I think there definitely needs to be something that sort of addresses the flow of traffic and, and that, that this area is for your residents primarily. So hopefully, that'll be something that you'll consider.
Council, additional questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is the public hearing. Mr. Quick, we have anybody sign up participating in this item?
Mr. Mayor, we have one in advance and one online. First to hear in the audience is Martha Lawrence.
Good evening, and if you can state your name and address for the record, and you'll be recognized for three minutes.
My name is Martha Lawrence, and I live on 1150 West Apple Pond Street. We are over there on the Woodburn subdivision, right behind the proposed project. I'm so sorry. Um, I'm here in front of the city council and the mayor to ask you to please vote no on the proposed Driftwood subdivision for a multifamily development. Why? Because we, as a community, cannot afford to add any more residential units to the area, and I will explain why. This project is going to be built on the corner of Venable and Eustick, as you know, an intersection that is already very busy and dangerous. The intersection does not have a traffic light, and Venable itself is not finished, as it lacks turning lanes, bike lanes, and no parking signs. In less than a year, this area, Eustick between Meridian Road and Linder Road, has seen two new developments being built and one more that has already been approved. On the corner of Linder and Eustick, the Eddington subdivision was just built this past year, and it is still under construction with a total of 104 lots. Across the street from the proposed Driftwood subdivision at the south, south side of the intersection of Eustick and Venable, the new Wesley apartment complex is being built with a total of 191 units. The already-approved Woodrose Apartments will be going on the west side of the proposed project of the Driftwood subdivision, and it has 40 units. So this stretch of road between, you know, Eustick, Meridian, and Linder is going to have a total of 335 new households. And as you are very well familiar with Idaho households, they all have a minimum of two cars, okay? Which means that you are adding approximately, give or take, a total of 670 cars to an area that is already overwhelmed with traffic. Now let's talk about schools real quick. As you may already be familiar with Idaho households, just like cars, we have a minimum of two kids. I have two kids, so, which means you're adding 670 children, give or take, to a school district that just failed to pass a levy to be able to build more schools and provide more resources to the existing ones. How is our community going to be able to support this growth when we can't even get enough school buses to pick up the children that are already live in the area? We have that problem, okay? Realistically, there is nothing we can do about the already-approved projects and what is being built, okay? But those are some scary numbers that I just gave you for the residents that live there, okay? Now, Venable Lane is a subdivision collector street like they talked about, and it serves as the main entrance to our subdivision, and it's used by others behind us. Putting the proposed Driftwood subdivisions will not only hurt us as a community, but it will also add to the already-stressed infrastructure and school system in the area by adding more to the high number I just gave you, okay? As of this evening, I just checked, 387 of your residents signed the petition that said they don't want it, okay? That's 387 citizens are telling you no. Now I implore the city council to listen to its residents. As you can see from the numbers I just gave you, we're going to have a lot of issues to deal with in the upcoming future, so please don't add 57 more units. Please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Council questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
Hi.
You were nervous?
I am. I am sorry. I have no.
The kids should be so proud of you. You did a great job, and I, I just, I know sometimes it being the first time coming up here can be hard, but you did a great job. I just, I want to touch on one comment that you made, because I think it, it helps me understand where you're coming from, because I don't live in your neighborhood.
Right.
You said that this development would hurt you and your neighbors. Can you tell me what you mean by that?
So to, to, to touch on what you said about the turning lanes, there's no room for a right and a left, period. That is, you get stuck behind someone trying to turn left. You're not going anywhere. There is no pedestrian either going south on Eustick to, for people to cross, or even to cross, cross Venable. It's going to hurt us in a way, and you said, well, people are going to cut through the new subdivision. That's not true. They're going to find ways to cut through Woodburn and go out to either Linder Road or cut out through Meridian Road. We're going to see a heavy flow of traffic. I, I love my subdivision, because I leave my 10-year-old son to roam around. We have a little, you know, kind of circle. If I'm worried about more traffic coming through, I'm not going to let him, and he's not going to like me very much. So that's going to hurt us in the long run. I mean, I'm talking about 600-something cars that are already going to come through already. So I don't think you should be adding any more to it. We already have to deal with that, you know?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
Bob, I appreciate your passion for your neighborhood and for your community. Just want you, I, I really value that.
Thank you.
Is it then, if there was a signalized intersection there, you would change your opinion? If there was more commercial, would you change your opinion? Do you think?
Yeah.
Dirt? I mean, help me, help me understand kind of what you.
I mean, I'm, growth is coming.
Right, right.
Does it have to be residential, where you're adding more cars to the area that's already going to have it, that already has it? If you need to put storage there, I understand. It just won't be a constant of traffic, you know? And, and is the signal definitely going to help us? Yeah, but when is that going to happen? You know?
Thank you. I really appreciate your testimony tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
Have, have you and the neighbors talked about what you feel would be a good use in that location? Commercial doesn't necessarily mean less traffic. Sometimes it means more traffic, depending on the type of commercial, and it also could mean more, more cars through your neighborhood. So if, if, is the, is the preference or request, I want to make sure I'm understanding, as Councilman Cavanagh is trying to do the concerns, but is the concern that is the, I guess, the, what would be ideal, that nothing goes there? And, and the owner is supposed to just sit there with a vacant lot and, and, and pay their taxes on it? Or is there, you know, a, a different use that would be more preferred? And, and before you answer that, let me, let me say this. There was a, a comment in the, in the, the public comments about, well, we'd rather it be single-family residential. Well, if you have, let's say, 30 single-family homes in that instead of 50-town homes, and those 30 have three to four cars each, because you have two teenagers with two cars, that doesn't mean less traffic than 57-town homes with two vehicles. So to me, having single-family doesn't. So to me, having single-family doesn't solve the issue of there being fewer vehicles. So I just want to kind of understand then, like, is, is it an issue of cars? Is it an issue of just the intersection and not the actual property itself? Just to help us understand that.
I, I don't know what you can put there. If it was up to me, you would put a park, you know? It's the truth. I don't want anything going there, but I understand people have to do what they have to do. The problem is the intersection. It's not safe. And we're already on the west of the one you're proposing, there's gonna go forty apartments, you know? And, and it bleeds into Venable. This one bleeds into Venable. All of the other subdivisions bleed into Venable. You know, you have kids going into settlers parks, riding their bikes. Venable itself still doesn't have bike lanes and signs saying no parking, you know? It's just not a safe one. And so you're telling me, you know, what do I want? I don't know. I really want ACHD to put a signal and put what they need to do there. I, I mean, on, right now, that's what I want them to do. The property itself, I, I can't tell you what would be best there. I just know that fifty-seven more to the other ones, the three hundred and something that are already coming up is, it's, it just make, it doesn't make any sense. It shouldn't make any sense, you know? That's just how I feel.
Mr. Mayor, one more question.
Council pro.
And thank you for doing the, the counting on the number of units coming in. That's, I mean, we, we know because we approved them, but it, it, it is good to have the full number. Is there an anticipation that the residents that are there on that south side and in those a hundred and ninety units are going to be using Venable regularly? I would anticipate that they, you, you had mentioned that there's gonna be potentially six hundred and some cars using that intersection, but Venable is really the concern more than U-Stick. So are you anticipating that all of these new units, the residents will be using Venable?
Well, they're gonna be using their own Venable because Venable continues to that south side. You're talking about the hundred and ninety on the south side of U-Stick, right?
Yes, but we're primarily concerned with Venable on the north side.
The north side. Well, they, I'm, you're talking about traffic turning right and left. Either, either way, they're gonna use the intersection. You know what I'm saying? If you have a hundred and ninety people coming from the south into U-Stick, and then we're also coming into U-Stick, that's gonna be a problem within itself, you know? Oh, that's just just seeing a lot of cars.
Also any additional questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that was everybody who signed up in advance.
Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to come forward and provide testimony in this item or online? You have one person online that just raised their hand?
And Mr. Mayor, Jessica Lawrence. And Jessica, you can unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me all right?
You can.
All right. Thank you so much. I appreciate the chance to speak. Honestly, I was not going to be able to make them meeting tonight. My dad passed away two days ago, but I feel so strongly about this that I wanted to make time. Martha and I live in the same neighborhood. I'm at thirty-four twenty-seven North Anfield in Meridian. Full name Jessica Lawrence. And I've been following this project since July twenty-twenty-one. At that time, we've heard a lot of different renditions of what's going on. When we first were concerned about green space and where kids were going to play, we were told that settlers would be an option for those kids, which obviously is not a good answer, I don't believe. We've talked about, you know, Buckstone and how we don't want that to be an entrance. At one point, we were told that that would most likely not be the option, that we could possibly close that off or that would be just for emergencies. So we've gone through a number of renditions over the past few years. I did create this petition so we could have a lot of people sign it, express themselves. On the petition, we did say that we would support single-family homes and retail. I do not believe that most single-family homes are gonna have four cars. I, I don't think that's really a concern as much. I think you're going to have for the most two cars. That's a pretty average for most families. To give you an idea of our neighborhood, I have three kiddos myself. I have a four-year-old, a seven-year-old and a ten-year-old. And the seven-year-old and the ten-year-old roam like stray cats. I don't see them a lot of the time because they're playing with friends. We've got forty kids that get off from the Hunter bus just at this stop. So just to give you an idea of how many children that we have in this area. My concern is with Venable. If we have people clogging up Venable, trying to turn left, trying to turn right and people can't get onto Venable, what they are going to do, I know it sounds strange, but I really believe that they will, is they are going to go north and they are going to go through Buckstone and they're gonna join the line there instead of having to wait for someone to let them in. And so that is where we're going to see more of traffic through our neighborhood. Another thing that I wanted to point out is if you look at the connector, the little Stub Street Buckstone there, it almost always has cars, cars on both sides of the road. So usually there's about four cars parked there at all times. So you're going to have people turning where there already is a lot of congestion just from the local neighborhood. So that is a concern as well. One of the things I, I was able to listen to the last meeting, one of the things that came up, I, I honestly don't remember who said it, but they said that they empathize with the citizens, but they don't believe that we can hold the development hostage on the whims of ACHD. I completely understand that, but it does feel like what's happening instead is we are holding the concerns of this development, which will be owned by Brighton. They will be doing the rents or rental through them. It's not going to be owned by, you know, private citizens who are renting it to other people. They're the ones making the money. We're worrying a little bit more about them and their timeline rather than all of the citizens who live here and call this home. And honestly, really, really love our neighborhood.
Thank you, Jessica. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Question, just a comment. Jessica, thanks for your, your communication to the council. It wasn't lost on me that you've been tracking this project better than most people in our, in our community. And just for what it's worth, I think your feedback has made this project better. And I just want to say thanks for being an active and engaged citizen and joining us tonight. And I'll be up to the mayor and council. We're sorry for the loss of your family.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilboard.
Just a comment. Jessica, your, your point about cut through trap, well, you make a lot of really good points, but one of your points seems to add further support to this drive in tonight's discussion about adding an opportunity southbound on Venable to be able to turn right at the same time as you can turn left. So it doesn't stack. I think that stacking, not only it creates an unsafe turning condition, but your point, which I think is a fair one, indicates that it might encourage folks who are frustrated with perpetual stacking to, instead of turning right and sitting, they maybe turn left and try and find some way cutting through your neighborhood to avoid that problem. So seems like what you're bringing up just further supports tonight's discussion about creating two, two opportunities to turn southbound on Venable that Councilman Hoagland had brought up. So I appreciate that perspective.
Thank you.
Councilor share.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence, for being with us here tonight. You know, I, I get where you're coming from in terms of the, the fears. You know, you have a large number of children in your neighborhood. I guess a question for me would be, you know, what, what kind of process would get you comfortable? And what kind of changes would help? You know, if, if there is a combination of this right and left turn at Venable and U-Stick, maybe in combination with like a pedestrian plan that would actually show you where the sidewalks are gonna be, because this development would actually help improve to some extent the pedestrian facilities around it. If you could see that plan, you know, if, even if, for example, ACHD added a speed bump or something like that, you know, are, are those kinds of things what would get you comfortable or what would you like to see here? Because, you know, it, it is multifamily, but it is, at least it's townhomes, right? And, and it's not like a, a four-story apartment building. Thank goodness, which would be totally out of place here. So I guess I'm, I'm curious, you know, what, what kind of changes do you think would help it work or what kind of, what kind of process would you like to see that would help you? Just from a, a neighbor perspective?
I appreciate that question very much because I, I think you bring up a few really interesting points. One of them is for me, I don't think there's a lot of pedestrian traffic at the moment because there is not a sidewalk there. So I know with my kids, I kind of have to cross to the side of the street and, you know, we, we do our best, but there, there is not a lot of pedestrian traffic there. So I really can't speak much to that because I don't see a lot of that personally. I guess one of the things that I had talked to Brighton previously about was would there be a possibility that we could either have two exits onto Venable? So it would sort of be like a one-way sort of direction that you would do a loop. So at least that would control the traffic somewhat that you don't have people kind of going every which way that you have like an entrance and an exit. And another option that we had talked about at one point is if we couldn't do their own exit onto U-Stick as well as Venable, which would sort of cut that in half. Would we possibly be able to do, I believe that there was going to be another street built between the Woodrose properties as well as these Brighton properties and that would go onto U-Stick. And so those were the other options that we thought would just provide a better flow of traffic for everybody.
Mr. Mayor. Councilor.
I'll let the applicant address those possibilities in their, in their comments. I do know from reading the report from ACHD that they would not allow a additional connection onto U-Stick. And, and there's good reason for that. You know, if they started letting every development have its own connection to a, a major roadway like that, then it really wouldn't serve all of us well in the, in the long run, in the big picture of things. But you know, I'll let the applicant address whether like some kind of a loop or something is possible, but appreciate your feedback. And appreciate, you know, the proactiveness on your part, I think, to get those concerns out there.
Thank you.
Council, any additional questions? Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody else in, in the audience who'd like to provide testimony? If you'd like to come forward, please? Say your name and address for the record, please.
David Phillips, nineteen fifty-three North Tessa Avenue. Totally not here for this tab item, but just listening. First, I want to, I'm so thankful that we have a mayor and council that is genuinely seeking out the wants and needs of the people who do live directly in the area of this subdivision. I was thinking when I first walked in, man, that developer knows everybody in here and seems super comfortable. And then the lady walked up and she was uncomfortable with Councilman Cavanagh and the rest of you guys are really appreciative. Um, one of the things, living in the area that I do, where we're seeing a lot of developments going in and the roads aren't changing, is retail isn't always going to bring more traffic. Where, as the lady said, there's already going to be X amount of cars for, because of these houses. But if you were to build something that was more in line with what the community might need, like some retail purposes that could create opportunities where people could walk to these things and they could enjoy them in the community. You know, they, where they wouldn't have to have a car, that wouldn't bring more traffic in. And two, I'm not sure if anybody of you guys ever drive down U-Stick when it's crazy, like during the afternoon, I avoid it like the plague. And could you imagine, once the apartments go in, it's gonna be worse. These houses, it's gonna be worse. So I know this whole density issue where we're trying to build denser and denser and denser. I know why we're doing it, but we have to realize there was a reason why it was single-family homes in the beginning was because the more dense we make things, the more we're adding to the existing problems. And the fact that ACHD and West Data are not pre-stamping that this isn't going to affect them. They have everything figured out. In my opinion, it shouldn't even be in front of the city. Because this is the problem with ACHD. They just dump everything off on the city. They never do what they're supposed to. And they make promises like Councilman Strater said, this was supposed to be a roundabout. Not a big fan of roundabouts, but over and over and over again, in my opinion, ACHD on over promises and underdelivers over and over again. And then you have residents like this, these two ladies who have kids who, I can tell you right now, when I'm stuck in a place where there's no way to get out, I'm finding a way through the development. I'm opening my Google Maps and I'm like, how do I get out of this mess? So there is, there's a lot of issues that developers just rubber stamping the two rental units. Those people aren't vested. Those are people that are just kind of looking for an opportunity to find a place to live until they find a permanent house. So with rental units, sometimes you get really good renters, sometimes you get really bad renters. So, but just wanted to add in those two cents because I've done a lot of stuff with this in the past and thought of those things, but I just want to commend you guys for being so open and kind. So, thank you.
And thank you. Do you have a council, any questions? Is there anybody else who'd like to provide testimony on this item? Seeing none, there's staff want to make any comments before we invite the applicant?
Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to just, just chime in on some of the comments that, that I heard during the testimony, not to really take anything away from the applicant, but I hearing what the residents say, that does take it to heart. So I at least want to give the neighbors some context as to how we get here and how the process works. Cause I think it's very important. First of all, I worked on this project in two thousand and seven when I started with the city. And at that time, the concept plan did contemplate all commercial uses on the site. And the developer at the time that owned this had a very grand vision for this site. And then over time, as you guys all know, they tried to market that and try to wait and be patient. And at that point, two thousand and fifteen, they came back again and said, hey, we think we can make it work. And they amended the development agreement, the contract, changed the plan, still try to keep that commercial component. But again, no success. So we're eight years into this project with the CC zoning. He's hearing from the city, we want nothing but commercial on this corner, but nothing. He's saying he can't make it work. Here comes Summertown across the road, which is that other multifamily project. And two thousand and seventeen, they came in with a T and R zoning. We told them we wanted a mix of residential uses. Through that process, this council did knock down the density because you were concerned about the traffic and what was happening in the area. But at the same time, as staff was presenting that project to you, we wanted to hold this corner for commercial. Because we realized this whole area, this whole intersection was part of a mixed-use community. And we wanted to make sure that we did get those neighborhood serving uses. Again, the applicant, again, the, the buyer was there being very patient. Tried it again, it didn't work. In two thousand and twenty-one, this applicant developer came forward and modified that contract, the DA, which showed medical on the front and this particular residential project this evening. So although we're hearing what the neighbors are concerned about traffic and integration and wanting more commercial uses, what I'm trying to point out is that it's been tried since two thousand and seven to do something like that. The contract has been amended throughout the years. And now we're here tonight talking about, is this still consistent with that contract? And you hear from staff that it is. You hear from the planning and zoning commission that it, that it is. Now, I, I agree with you. I wish ACHD was here to defend some of their decision-making on this particular application. But in talking with the applicant, there is fifty feet of right-of-way that ACHD owns currently. So there may be an opportunity to reconfigure it, reconfigure that intersection and make it work the way you guys are talking about it this evening to mitigate some of the traffic concerns. Unfortunately, we don't have somebody here to confirm that. So it really comes down to your comfort level tonight, whether or not you want to move it forward with that condition that they work with staff and ACHD at the certificate zoning compliance level to make that happen or continue the project to get, allow staff or the applicant to work with ACHD and get that information for you. So I really just wanted to go on the record that we hear what the neighbors want. We tried to do that. We have a contract in place. There's certain things we have to do as staff in a city. This particular case tonight is, is that particular incidence where we have a contract in place, we have a concept plan, the applicant is here to make sure he's meeting the terms of that contract. But certainly with that conditional use permit or the subdivision that you're taking on tonight, I think it, it does warrant maybe looking and digging a little deeper and seeing if we can work with ACHD to reconfigure that intersection. That's all I wanted to chime in, at least, at least give you some context as to city and the previous developer did try to do more neighborhood serving uses on this and just could not make it work. And I think the, the, at least my experience in dealing with And I think the, the, at least my experience in dealing with that developer was the fact that the commercial was at the mid-mile and not necessarily at the intersection. There are tarrows that you guys hear all the time from the development community. And access pay to play a key role in it as well. Just wanted to give you that context.
Mayor, couple of comments.
Lieutenant.
Mayor, members of council, looking at the, the southbound on Venable, I, I am still a little concerned, even with the right-hand concept, right-hand turn concept, because due to vehicles being right next to one another, sometimes that causes some significant blind spots for those turning right onto a forty-five mile an hour roadway. And you have cars stacking to turn left unless they stagger the lanes to where the right-hand turn can sit further out and be able to see. But I think there's some significant work that has to be done at that intersection. Maybe even through conversations with ACHD to add in the straight turn, but have it closed. So then it gives you a buffer of a buffer lane between the left and right. So with it, when they come to develop that with it as a true controlled intersection, then they already have the center lane developed. So I think it can be accomplished, but having cars stacked right next to each other, doing two movements potentially at once. Fortunately, we, we have very few accidents in that area currently. Last couple of years, I think in the last three years, we've had a total of six crashes in that area, maybe seven. So the crashes are low, but I, I still have some concerns with the idea. I think it's obviously needed. So you don't have a stack of cars backup Venable, but I think it could improve even beyond that and prepare it for future changes.
Council question there. All right. And with that, we'll ask the applicant to come back up for any final comments.
Mayor and council for the record, John Wardle, twenty-nine, twenty-nine West Navigator, Meridian, Idaho, eight, three, six, four, two. And share again. Leave this one up because it kind of gives a, an overview of some things that are going on here. One of the questions was, and also mentioned in the staff report was what, what happens between our property and the project that's already been approved, which is called Woodrose. On the south side of Eustick, the road is called Blairmore. If you continued up, I think it's also references Cooper Lane. So there's going to be some naming things there, but Woodrose, when they brought through and got their approval, they are having a single point of access onto Eustick in alignment with Blairmore, which is represented by this arrow pointing north. Kind of in the middle of the screen here. One of the conditions that was required, which was agreed to, it becomes a, becomes a timing question, but doing cross-access through the commercial property out to Blairmore. So that both of these projects could get to that point. We actually have a driveway that exists today on Eustick, but as a condition of approval from ACHD, that goes away and the cross-access would occur between the Driftwood project and Woodrose. There's still one intervening property owner, maybe even two property owners between what is Cooper Lane and Blairmore. So not all that is controlled by either one of us. But at least there would be a concentration or opportunity for some cross-access there. I, I do want to correct at least one statement that Ms. Lords made. Because I remember it specifically was the question came up in our neighborhood meeting process. And I also just want to go to this as well, that the, the neighborhood meeting process wasn't just a one and done process. This started back in July of twenty twenty-one, when we brought this development agreement modification before council. We had a neighborhood meeting then, we had a neighborhood, neighborhood meeting on October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. And we had another one on March twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. Some of the residents were unable to attend. We offered to do another one with Ms. Lords, reached out to her several times. And ultimately we were told that they would just bring their concerns. Said, we're not interested with our, at this time to do it, we will just submit our comments directly to the city council. So we have not had the, you know, we haven't been open to conversations. We've actually had a lot of conversations with neighbors. But the question that came up specifically was, is the connection needed at Buckstone to the north? And our comment was, we don't need it. But ACHD has already created a sub-street there and we will comply with the requirements that they make us do. So that's why it's still there. We never said we wouldn't do it. We actually said, if, if the agency said it wasn't needed or not required, yeah, we don't need it. We ultimately, we can get to Venable and ultimately we could get out to Eustick and a couple of different places when the project fully builds out. But we never said we wouldn't do it. We said we would make the connection and ACHD has continued that condition from two thousand and seven, twenty fifteen, twenty seventeen, twenty twenty-one. And here we are today, that condition still exists that that connection to Buckstone remain. You had the question about cross-access. I can go into a little bit deeper, but we are committed to making cross-access that would occur once the, either the commercial project moves forward or Woodrose comes forward, that cross-access will be granted and that will be a point of access into the Driftwood community. As it relates to Venable and that intersection, yeah, there is a, there's an additional study that needs to happen there on what makes the most sense. I can't commit today to say that this is the solution because ACHD ultimately may come back and say, well, we see it should be something else. But I think what should happen is that opportunity to continue that conversation. There will still be a signal that will occur here. We are making roadway improvements as well that will make it better, both for motorists and pedestrians alike. But yes, could we look at that intersection a little bit more? We absolutely could. I just can't tell you definitively that that would be the solution that they would land on. But I do know that ACHD would entertain that conversation. Mr. Mayor, it is true that this, this property does have history. When I came before in twenty twenty-one, there was a lot of conversation about the, the nature of this project. We were very clear that we were pursuing a mixed-use project. And mixed-use in terms of maintaining some commercial there. We were able to find a very good community partner that sees the need here to do something that is not available currently. I can't guarantee when that will happen, but I have met with them and they are still committed to doing a medical use here. And that's why we've designed it this way and expansion for other, another use in the future as well. We are, I don't want to fall back on this, but I do, we, we did bring this project to you before. This is consistent with the development agreement that was modified. And as a condition of that, we were required to do a conditional use permit for the residential and be a little bit more clear on how all these pieces are coming together. And we're bringing that to you today. And asking for your affirmation and approval of the conditional use permit as well as the preliminary and final plat. Can I stand for any questions you might have?
Thank you, John. Counsel, additional questions, comments for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perrow.
Actually, I'd like to hear from our fire department. Who typically prefers to have two accesses. If ACHD were to have not required the private access to Woodburn, where would be that secondary fire access?
Mr. Mayor, City Council. Councilman Perrow, in this particular case, the secondary access is not required by the fire code. But like as, as I've been stating for the seven years that I've been sitting here, more access is better. Because we never know what we're going to get. So if that access off Venable is there and we do have the cross-hacks, excuse me, cross-access over to Woodrose, that's good, but that access up north is better. I mean, we could, we can work together with Brighton and you know, look at maybe some traffic calming scenarios, you know, speed cushions or whatever ACHD is calling them. Nowadays, they go between speed humps and speed cushions and, you know, put something at the entrance there into there. And that's going to, you know, maybe lessen the likelihood of people wanting to cut through if they always have to go over the speed bumps to get, speed humps to get through there. But by fire code, it's not required.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Thanks for the information. Appreciate refreshing our memory about the cross-access with Woodrose. You know, I do think that's very positive for the future, eventually when that's built, that will help with the whole areas access to Eustick and it'll definitely improve the situation. Have you put some thought around working with ACHD to keep your drive aisle open that accesses Eustick? You know, is that something that you've explored? I don't know how that would work with the commercial component of your project. So that's maybe something for you to comment on, but you did sort of leave that trail of breadcrumbs out there.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Schrader, it, it's a good question. One of the, one of the conditions as this came back through with the revision was that that access that is shown, and it's faint here, but it's shown right there. There was a driveway that that driveway would be closed. As you can tell, the, the way that this project has been laid out is there's a building that's there. But not only is there a building there, we've taken an opportunity to take, you know, the entrance and push it to the north and parking behind. Instead of that being a driveway into a parking lot. So some trade-offs here, right? So as it exists today, no, we can't maintain that and keep that open. And when it was made a condition from them, and there was not going to be another access point available to us, but we go cross-access, we didn't pursue it any further because we knew it wasn't, was not a possibility.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Yeah, I wasn't referring to keeping that open on a permanent basis by any means, but more you know, if that, if, if there is a possibility of that being an interim solution. You know, maybe bridging the timeline from when the townhomes are built, depending on the timing of your commercial user to, and the timing of when this intersection would be built out.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Schrader. Honestly, I don't see that that would end up being at that location would be an interim solution because at some point, St. Luke's will come forward. It, it won't function for what they want to do. I would say that when their project comes forward and they do their parking lot, which would be all of this at one point. Hopefully that point Woodrose is also moved forward and we can make that connection at one time. So those things can be complete, but I just really don't see that we would create an interim solution coming through this to Eustick. It just does not seem feasible.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Yeah, I mean, the, the good news is, I mean, at least from what we understood about the original timeline for the Woodrose apartments is not like years into the future. It sounded like it was pretty imminent, but things can change. You know, what, what are you hoping to accomplish tonight? Are you going to try to push forward? You want us to go ahead and vote on it up or down? Are you willing to take a beat and try to work with ACHD to, you know, kind of come back with more detail around what you can do at the intersection with Venable and the possibility of putting some speed bumps up into the subdivision to the north, you know? Or what, what, what sort of tactically do you want to do tonight? I'll tell you where I'm at. I'm just one person, I totally be outvoted. I'd like to take a beat and have you work with ACHD a little more to come up with a plan that I think could get everybody comfortable.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Schrader, I appreciate the, the candor. And where, where you are on that. And there, there obviously is an opportunity to ask that question of ACHD and see. I think there, we're, we're happy to have that conversation. We're committed to doing what, what needs to be done. But at the same time, we do need to work within that agency's purview. And they may determine that the solution that is shown right now with this project until a signal comes in is what they, what they would recommend. They have seen this. This intersection as it's shown currently, they've reviewed it from the context with the improvements we've been made. And I know that they have I don't, can't tell you for sure if those plans have been stamped for the improvements thus far, but we're close for Venable with the sidewalk and Storm Grandage curb gutter and the roadway improvements here. I guess what our hope would be that there would be a an approval granted with the caveat that we go and talk with ACHD. And if we can't address that at a time of CCC, we will. Ultimately, we are at their their decision on this. So.
Mr. Mayor.
That's my home.
And Mr. Wardle, what, what is your timing for this project? I know that commercial will be different based on what never St. Luke's decides to do, but for the housing, which is in demand, although the sensitive interest rate fluctuations, but what, what are you, what are you looking at right now for timing?
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Hoagland, Council President Hoagland. You know, our timing is, we, we do deal with weather here. And so we are kind of at that interesting point that without an approval now, then it, the project just kind of sits for another year, another season. So our hope is that we can get the preliminary and final plat approved. We do have some side improvements we want to make for the residential piece before the winter happens. So that's our goal. That's why we, you know, that's why the preliminary and final plat is before you as well.
Mr. Mayor, follow-up.
Councilman Hoagland.
What I hear you, Mr. Wardle, is that there's not going to be people moving into the houses next spring. In other words.
Mr. Mayor. Best case is we would be starting construction of homes next spring for move-in. Maybe if we're lucky at this time next year, but probably later in the summer.
Okay. And if you allow me, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Wardle, I want to make a advertisement for ACHD. I don't know if folks are aware, but they are having people comment, they held a big public hearing, I think, into July. But on their integrated five-year work plan through August fourteenth, so you can go on to achidah.org and look for the integrated five-year work plan. They want people's comments. So I had gone on and was looking at this. For Venable, they have a gray line and it says FUT, which means future. So you can see projects twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven. And then you've got future. So we often make comments as a council and we meet with ACHD and we give them our priority projects. And this is one I think we can talk to them about when that time rolls around again of what is a priority project for within our city? Well, a light at Venable might be one of those projects, but we have a lot of projects. We probably have a top twenty and we're always trying to shift and figure out what those are. But if, if you would go on and comment about what you want to see at Venable and Eustick, they are listening to people right now. So that's really critical for you to respond. Since this is their listening period, they want to know because then they'll make their plans and then move forward and make some adjustments. So you talk about, you have a need, whether this project goes forward or not, you still want a light. So I think that would be something for you to take action on with all the, all your neighbors in the neighborhood. So. So thank you for indulging me on that advertisement for ACHD and their public comment period. Cause I think that is important because they do look for that, that public comment. And we can certainly chime in when we sit down with ACHD about Venable as well. So that's, that's critical.
Thank you. And, and I don't know if this is for you or Bill or maybe nobody, but you know, traditionally ACHD, you have to generate the traffic before they do the light. Unfortunately, is this a different situation? Have they already determined that the traffic, his, that they really don't care how busy Eustick gets. Now, just being honest, they only care how busy Venable gets before they'll consider a light. We've had a conversation right here on Broadway that you got to generate traffic, doesn't matter how hard it is or dangerous a turn is generally, but do we know if Venable's been approved at this point in time, or will they still have to meet a threshold?
So, Mr. Mayor, I don't know. I was going to answer the question and the, the last part of that. So I don't know what's recently gone on, but your previous comments and question, there are warrants that have to be met and the north and the south leg warrants, I'll have to assume have not been met as of the last time they looked at the intersection for.
the north and the south leg warrants, I'll have to assume have not been met as of the last time they looked at the intersection for meeting the warrants to to provide a full signal here. I will say just briefly while 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 I'm here, I did um, email Christian Somon. Uh, she actually emailed me in all fairness, she emailed me yesterday asking if she needed to be here. I was out of the office yesterday. Um, I told her, I said, hey, default would be please attend these. And if you hear from me that you don't need to be there, then please, then you can have the night off. But so that's on me a little bit there. I was out of the office yesterday when she asked if she needed to be here. So I do apologize that uh, you can't hear directly from ACHD or some defense or explanation of some of these questions you have this evening.
Thank you.
Additional questions, comments for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilboard.
Question for legal. I I get where you're coming from, and I think you totally get where we're coming from on this venerable lane issue and just trying to be as proactive as we can to address what I think we all see is one of the challenges that is a little bit beyond merely moving cars and and metrics and and levels of service. Trying to hit a safety element. And the question that I had for Mr. Nary is to conditional use permit can place conditions upon it. And and the context of the history is really important here as to what we've already committed to as a city. But is it is it too disconnected to have conditions related to lanes on venerable lane to Eustick as a condition of the CUP, which seems a bit almost a stretch a little bit.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, yeah, I I think it is a little bit of a stretch. First, I don't know if the developer currently owns another piece still. Do you still own that section? So so they don't even own that section of the property. So they can ask, and I'm sure their adjacent property owner is would be willing to allow them to build it. But I think putting it as a condition is that's why I think Mr. Wardle suggested it. The strongly encouraged council asked, council would like to see something to that effect. But that doesn't hold up the the project from being able to move forward.
Mr. Mayor.
That's my whole.
And and to that point, from staff's perspective, if you could explain how that would work, you mentioned about going into this CCC process and having that issue explored and coming back. Can you kind of walk us through what that would look like?
Sure. Mayor, members of the council, council president Holland. Like any situation right now, the applicant wants some flexibility. So this is getting them through the hearing process. And then the next step is to go through site plan review with the city. We call it certificate of zoning compliance. Um, is is our technical application name for it. But essentially, we transmit applications to ACHD even at that level, and they provide comments on back to us as as part of that. They may say our conditions still stand under the approval of the conditional use permit, or if there's that condition of approval that the applicant work with ACHD and city to possibly come up with a different configuration at the intersection, at least we have that condition. And we'll make sure that both agencies are on the same page, or at least mitigate some of that concern and to applicant's point, it may just be, we think we have it right this way, but if we leave the condition broad enough, or at least your recommendation to work with ACHD, at least we know we have it on the record. And then as part of our review of that certificate of zoning compliance, we're looking for those improvements and making sure that ACHD captures that in their their approval back to us. But we make sure nothing gets lost as it transitions to permitting.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Overton.
I say something I don't think's been said tonight. I like the project. I like the look of the units. They don't look like just your regular old apartments. These look really well designed. I appreciate that there's two car garages on each one and driveway space for extra cars. One of the first things I was worried about when I see something like this, this density on under five acres is are we going to have enough parking or are we going to be parking on the street? I don't see that issue here as I have in some other applications. So I want to I want to commend you on the design that you've laid out for such a small area. Most of these concerns that have come through appear to be related to venerable lane and traffic, which is kind of outside of your control. I think there's got to be some way that we can move forward, whether it's strongly encouraging ACHD to modify this roadway in some form sooner than later. So that you can have right and left out on the Eustick road, or at least and maybe both bring forward the need and then the building of the intersection out to a full signal sooner than later. You know, but there's there's a whole bunch of intersections in the city of Meridian that need this sooner than later, not just venerable lane. So we feel your pain. We feel the pain of everybody who doesn't want to see this happen. But it's not lost on me that this application process for this piece of land started sixteen years ago. And that request to have it all be retail has failed multiple times. And that this is the only product that's come forward and has already been approved by a previous council in twenty twenty one. I think this is the best mix for this location. And we have to look at how best we can strongly encourage ACHD to try to fix this roadway sooner than later to make this work for not just your project, but for all the residential people that live to the north and even to the northwest of where your project's going in.
Mr. Mayor, um, if I just might, with that direction of strongly encourage, I can guarantee you that my first call tomorrow will be to ACHD to have the conversation. So it's not just a another application down the road. We we've been talking about this project for a while, and there's actually two sets of plans. There's plans internal to the project and there's venerable. So there's an opportunity to to make something here that would be better, even if it's an interim on making the intersection wider now while we're still waiting for a signal to occur in the future.
It it may be one of the things that I I'm wading into different waters, but related waters, but I think the forty five mile per hour on Eustick has been something that we talked about of some concern. Um, you know, they've talked about other ways to work on the de- design elements of Eustick to have a different speed limit, but I think that even that's a conversation still for ACHD transportation commission. I don't really know where those stand, but this is one of the few parts of our city, which is an ACHD roadway that's been improved to five lanes where we have a forty five mile to my knowledge. I thought this was forty five in this along the section Eustick.
Mr. Mayor.
I thought it was forty.
I since I live there and travel it, it's forty miles.
All right, then I I re- I re-
What's the rate of speed?
Probably forty five. I I pulled back then. I thought I thought we were at forty five in this section. So okay, I I stand corrected, but anyways.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we forgive you. You're a South sider.
That's right. Yeah, we we have forty five mile an hours in the speed in the south with no sidewalks. Uh, one lane roads, the the farm lane roads in the south with forty five. That's where we roll.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilboard.
I Councilman Overton's comments are, I think, are well taken. The project, we did skip some of that, which is the discussion of it really is an attractive project that's consistent with um, and and very well might exceed really what was hoped for um and intended here. I do remember this. I I was in the other building in oh, seven. Um, this year in twenty one, and so I remember every stage of this and the struggles for decades um, to try and have this this mid mile commercial thrive. So uh, I think it is a very attractive project. It's consistent with the DA. Um, I think the conditions from the staff report are all well taken as well. So a lot of good work has gotten us to this point. And I understand the strong encouragement and direction for this applicant to work with ACHD and address venerable lane. There's an opportunity at the CCC's point to incorporate some improvements. Absolutely want that encouragement to be part of part of an approval if that were to proceed tonight. Um, Councilman Cavanagh brought up the the open space and my thought was that you know, it at least be fenced, if not relocated. And I think the applicant had referenced a willingness to address to do that at least to ensure if it's not relocated into a safer location that the fence seems to be safer than a berm. You know, to have an insur- assurance that youngsters can't wander off into onto venerable lanes. I thought that was a really good point that he made. So both of those, um, well, that would be a more of a condition, an absolute condition fencing at least. Then the the encouragement to work with ACHD on the venerable lane. So I don't think there were any other loose ends, but I would be comfortable doing it to to approve the CUP application. Uh, preliminary and final plat that's presented with those two uh additional elements incorporated.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holland.
And and I would, the encouragement would not only be, you know, wider lanes for right and left turn movement, but the fact that uh, they explore putting in a light as soon as possible. I mean, that if they would do that right away, that would be the best alternative. And and to Lieutenant Harper's comment about, you know, the dangers, whatnot. I I know where we live, um, we have the ability to with that vehicles in the left lane and I want to turn right. I can hang back and I have a line of sight, so they can they pull up. So we managed to figure it out there. I don't know if they have the same line of sight there. So it it is couldn't can be dangerous, but fortunately in our situation, we have line of sight, so we can sit back. But it's free. We can go and they can sit there. Wait till that lane gets cleared. So but anyway, to the point that a light is probably the best option. So I don't want to preclude that from being discussed for immediate approval.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Schrader.
Just for discussion, I may be the odd one out on this one. Um, so to me, the right course of action would be to continue the application. And I think that um, I hear the applicant's point that they can't control ACHD. Have an ACHD report that frankly reads like we had a plan. A plan fell through. Um, there is no date for the installation of that intersection on their work plan as of yet. I think it's a little bit giving false hope to kind of give the impression that 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 might happen in the near future. Um, I should hope that it could, but I just knowing ACHD and how things happen with them, I'd be very surprised if a if a roadway project could move from happening in the future to happening in the next five years. Um, where I do think we have an opportunity, and I think what the missing element is to me is that we could take two weeks and um, the missing element is the city. And I think that the city could help, you know, with that partnership with the applicant and ACHD to get a plan together to at least try to make sure that the, you know, left and right turning movements could happen at that intersection faster. Um, I also think it would be great, you know, to try to work on at least some speed bumps or whatever they're calling them these days uh into the intersection to the north. Um, so I that's my feeling is, you know, to take the advantage of the timing now while we have the application in front of us to try to make that happen. You know, I I believe that the developer will work on it. I just think that when we have the application is the right time for the city to step in. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Yeah, question from my good colleague in the other side of the room. Do you anticipate that a continuance would result in a different decision from the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Uh, yeah, I think what would happen as a result of that would be some pressure because both the city and the applicant would be asking to have that conversation with ACHD. And so I actually think it would move that solution forward faster. Um, that 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 maybe that's a just me being hopeful, but I would hope we have a good enough relationship with ACHD that if the mayor called or, you know, others call and say, hey, look, we really need you to take a look at this. Um, city staff got on the horn, we could try to make this more of a priority to figure out a solution so that we're having a discussion with our citizens, we can say, hey, you know, there's a plan here. But we don't control, you know, that agency.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Part of our council's brand is we've really encouraged our governmental collaboration. Don't think it's going to change my mind. Support of the request. We think that by urging good collaboration with some of our ACHD colleagues would accelerate or or I think the other piece, though, that is really important is for our body is with the review integrated five year work plan, and we have an opportunity to weigh in on accelerating projects as we have done, that we keep this split intersection top of mind in our conversation. Maybe just ask Caleb to pass along some of that feedback to the transportation commission as they look to explore the.
Yeah. The 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 one just, you know, want want to beef. I don't know that I or any of you should be picking up the phone, calling ACHD. Maybe I'm wrong. Is that I'm looking at legal in terms of, I mean, staff level communication, but should we be reaching out at this point in time?
I I guess, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it sort of depends if the if you're going to continue it, I would suggest you not do that. Because you can't go gather your own information for a future hearing. But if you ask staff to do that, to reach out, I again, I would, I I I understand what where the concerns are. The the concern I have from a legal standpoint is conditioning that as a requirement when it's property they don't own. They don't have any ability to do that. They will likely have the ability to do it. But technically legally, they have no ability to do anything with that intersection because it's not part of this project. And it's not part of this plat. So to then require that that be a condition of the CUP to add it to the plat when it's not their property anymore is a little more troubling to me. That's the concern. I don't know what ACHD is saying. I think the mayor hit it on the head earlier. ACHD has a formulaic method on when they decide the warrants exist for road improvement. All the desire in the world doesn't change their formula. So I I don't know legally if that's really the right pathway that I could suggest you go down.
And for councils, I do have a letter in my inbox to ACHD on the five year work plan based upon the results of the changes that were made. Um, this is not in the letter, and we'll tell you that at the that point in time. Doesn't mean I can't add something to say, please go relook at this intersection. In that regards, but that will be a letter that will be sent to ACHD in the next week, or the other on things.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Overton.
With the the input from our city attorney. I don't think it's fair at this point to hold the applicant up for something that is outside of their control. I think we have a great staff and a great relationship with ACHD. The curb gutter and sidewalk on venerable lane is not installed yet. It's the perfect opportunity between now and when this gets built, if they need to make a modification to a roadway before construction has started. I think we owe it to the applicant tonight to vote on this, whether it's voted up or voted down. Mr. Mayor.
I I was just gonna say, I think history has proven if there's one partner in this community when it comes to road projects is Brighton. And if there's a a willingness in a way, they will make it happen if they can't do it. Quite frankly, no one can. I think that their relationship with A- ACHD, I would say is stronger than the cities in their building because I they put up more money and built more roads in Meridian than eight than we ever have um as a city or community. So to me, it's in the right hands of people to get, uh, I think they've heard from that standpoint, it's just what can they effectuate in that process? But I've said my two cents.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilboard.
We would close the public hearing on H twenty. Move we close the public hearing on H twenty twenty three zero zero two one.
Have a motion second to close the public hearing. Is there a discussion? If not, on favor signified by saying aye. Those thing, let's have it, and the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
Starting with where you left off, I think that's a huge factor, and it's one of the elements that. Makes our big growing city still feel small is when you know the developers that are good for you. And the reputation and not everybody has. The same history and experience with our community, so we're blessed to. To still know the folks that come and care about what happens in the city and and how things get done and. When they say they might make a call tomorrow morning, pretty certain John literally calls tomorrow morning. I take you at your word. Your word's good. We've seen your work for a long time. That matters. In this context, when we might be legally prohibited in conditioning a C U P that requires it. I think when we say we strongly encourage you to work with our city staff and A C H D. To address the concerns raised tonight about venerable lane, the ones that the citizens also echoed. I know our staff takes it very seriously, and I know you do too, so. That is part of what will be my motion to approve the C U P. From fifteen sixteen years ago, right, the mixed use community properties, zone C C. The D A allows and contemplated from a couple of years ago, fifty seven residential units here. It's what we've been presented and we have a really good. User directly to the south, hopefully to follow soon, so. We really are following suit with what's been intended, so the applicant's done what they've been asked to do and. And to the design elements of this application and the conditions that they've met, I think our staff has done a really good job. Working with the applicant to ensure this appears to be a top rate project, so. Based upon that, I'm going to make a motion that we approve H twenty twenty three zero zero two one. C U P and the preliminary and final plat. As presented in the staff report of August eighth, twenty twenty three, to include the conditions. Additional con- conditions presented in tonight's hearing. With regards to the collaboration with A C H D in venerable lane and with regards to the. Fencing, if not relocation of the. Of the top lot that Councilman Kavner had raised to be included as additional conditions. Second.
I have a motion and a second to have discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
Just a quick question for Councilman Borden. If I'm if I'm hearing the motion correctly. There's obviously not a requirement on the applicant to have a certain result from A C H D, just a request that they pursue it. So in other words. You're moving to approve this, even if there are no changes to the. There there's no result in changes to the intersection. I just wanted to make sure I understood that. Okay.
Are there further discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holden. Yeah, just appreciate the neighbors coming out and testifying, understand your concern. I understand it. Since I live a mile to the west off Eustick Road and it collects nine hundred homes. That 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 one of the ways you go out is Eustick, so understand that that traffic impact. At the same time, we we have to follow state land use planning laws and. All the bare land that you see in our community has a plan and there's housing or there's commercial or there's. There's something in its place that we have to have a very, very good reason where a developer comes forward to not. Do what when it meets the plan. For us to turn it down, there has to be very strong legal arguments to make that case, otherwise. We run afoul of the state law and and they have some recourse that they could do. We do want a variety of housing. I know one of the comments was about, you know, it's it's townhomes which are very desirable in our community right now. That there are, there's something that we don't have many of. There's there's a comment about good renters and bad renters. And you can say the same thing about, I live in a subdivision, it's mostly single family homes who are. You have good owners and bad owners, you know, the same thing, but it really comes down to good landlords and bad landlords. Because we have a house just a few doors down that out of state owners. And they rent it out and you got ten kids renting rooms in that house with as many vehicles. And whatnot, so just being. You know, that the fact that they're townhomes doesn't necessarily mean they're all going to be bad or whatnot. Because one of the things you have to consider is the fact, who's the owners? You've got local owners, you've got people who have an investment and they want to return on that investment, and that's the biggest thing. It's not an out of state person who buys this home, they're going to rent it out for a period of time, see property values appreciate. And then they're going to flip the house and they don't care what happens to the property in the meantime. Here you've got people who are holding it long term and they want to have that return, so they want that property well cared for. And that's a bonus to you because that protects your properties because you're going to have well maintained rental units. And not going to be run down like you can have in a in a single family home subdivision in this in this case that we deal with this one home. So it's it's, you know, I understand the implications that it can have on traffic. I think you heard the arguments of what we're trying to fix and have addressed. I do encourage you to contact A C H D. And and comment, have until the fourteenth for their five year work plan. You can play around in there and find it where venerable is, but talk about that intersection of what you want to see done. And get your neighbors to do that as well, because that's that's very important to to have that voice in the conversation, so I appreciate that. And I do support the motion, you know, I understand the Councilman Schrader's desire to wait, try to work it out. But as 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 counsel had said, it it it's problematic and it's. We're asking them to do something on property that they don't own, so. As 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 Mayor Sinison said, we're we're dealing with someone though who in the past has shown that whatever they say they will do and. I know that they will give their best effort to try to to make something work and make an improvement there, so. That's the that's the best we can do. We want to do it right. We want to do it. What everyone wants, but sometimes we just have to go as far as we can and say that's the best we can do, and I think this is the case here.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
And you know, just to explain where I'm coming from, right? And understanding we don't control everything, understanding that it's tough for people to have conversations and a application before us and. And so forth, but I'd just like to see us try to work on these a little bit more to to get a solution around the concerns. Right to approving it and. I I wasn't suggesting a denial, I was suggesting was a continuance. I I just want to make sure that's clear for people. It's not a matter of a lack of trust, it's just a matter of, you know, trying to trying to bring forward a solution faster. That's how I was trying to accomplish that, and I think when we put pressure and. Help bring city staff and and really make it a priority, whether it, you know, happens afterward or ha- happens ahead of time, I think it it's helpful. I just think, you know, again, by approving it, there's there's no guarantee that anything's going to happen, and that's where I'm kind of. Struggling a little bit if we have a little leverage now. But, you know, I I respect everybody's opinion on it and just a little different for me. Thanks.
Council additional. Comments? Question's been called, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Schrader.
No.
Overton.
Yes.
Aye.
Kavner.
Aye.
Borden.
Aye.
Oakland.
Aye. I have eyes, one A, and the item is agree to. With that, council, let's go ahead and take a twenty minute. Break, and so it'll be about eight twenty five before we pick it up again.
All right, council will go ahead and come back from recess. And we'll move on to the next item, which is public hearing for 2023 UDC text amendment ZOA 2023-0001. We'll open this public hearing with staff comments.
All right, council will go ahead and come back from recess. And we'll move on to the next item, which is public hearing for 2023 UDC text amendment ZOA 2023-0001. We'll open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So I'm here tonight to present to you the first round of UDC changes for this year. A couple of housekeeping items I wanted to just clarify on the record, had a chance to look at the public record, public comments for this application and did note that there was a discrepancy with some of the UDC sections originally in the paper, I would say I had, we had noticed the content for tonight's hearing to include chapters two through five of the UDC. And there's actually one additional change to some of the sections in chapter six. But I did have a chance to work with the attorney's office. They said we were okay to move forward with that Scribner's error. So I just at least wanted to go on the record and let Melissa out there know that we did get her comments and that we are getting that corrected. And I'm going on the record to clarify that that was an error. And we will be talking about code changes through from chapters two, chapters two through chapter six. Also, as part of that public testimony, she had conveyed her concerns with, or at least wanting some more transparency as to who was on the UDC focus group. And she also had some questions around the process of that. So as you all know, historically, we've been doing this for many years together. And a few years ago, this body asked staff to put together a UDC focus group. Now, it's not a formal group like a historic preservation commission or planning and zoning commission. It's not appointed by mayor or city council. It's just a group of design professionals, citizens, city staff to get together and make sure that we have a broad range of talent to talk about future code changes. So on this particular first graphic for you here, before I get into my presentation with the UDC changes, I at least wanted to be transparent on the record tonight that currently these are the acting members on the UDC focus group so that those who want more information about it know who are on it and what we do and how we do it. So essentially, we track the changes throughout the year. Usually, if we do more than one round, the first round is typically more cleanup items. And then if there's a phase two or phase three throughout the year, those are usually a heavier lift and more involvement. But this, again, the purpose of tonight's discussion is really to talk about majority of it is cleanup items with a few new items that I want to bring to your attention. As I move into my presentation, feel free to interject or ask questions throughout. You know, this is a free flow conversation.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor.
Just regarding the UDC focus group, I'm not sure if that is accurate. I think it would make sense for us to circle back with the members of the UDC focus group and make sure that all of them still consider themselves members. I had a conversation with at least one individual on this list who said that she had resigned from this group. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor.
Yes, if we're at least starting here. I know some of these names and certainly there's some city staff that are on here and some folks from the building development world that we see on a fairly regular basis. How many members that are currently on the UDC focus group are not associated with building and development?
Mayor, members of the council, the, well, Lacey is part of code enforcement, but she is city staff. And then we have a real estate, Steve, I don't think is part of that, but he's still part of the real estate world. And then we have Annette Alonso, who was part of that Southern Rim Coalition. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe that is who you were referring to. I know last invite that I invited her, she declined the meeting but did not say that she was resigning from it. So if that is the case, we can certainly, if someone else wants to participate or is willing to do that, I would encourage them to email me and let me know that. And I'm certainly happy to extend that invite to any other citizen out there that wants to be part of the group.
So, Bill, I'm gonna, Mr. Mayor, sorry. I'll just provide, I think, some good feedback there for you and the department. I think to be proactive in engaging public around this. I've gotten feedback, I think, from every quote unquote citizen that has served on this committee in one form or another, and they have, it has not been a positive experience for them, which is why they have not stayed on and participate. I think that there is real value that comes with industry professionals can collaborate and engage with citizens who are uninformed. I learned so much when I was new to the city council. But it takes, I think, that extra step of really guiding them, which is something I think the community development department does a really good job of. I'm just really kind of asking and encouraging to be more proactive in how we bring people on and how we can educate them. They're not subject matter experts, and there's value in that representing Main Street. And I just think that we need to do maybe a little bit better job of providing that perspective to this focus group. Because I take the feedback from this group with a lot of confidence, and I want to have a good understanding that it's well represented by both industry and laypeople.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor.
I think it's important to have these conversations very openly. I've received similar feedback. And I do know that, you know, when occasionally we have had a private citizen serve on this committee, sometimes they feel that they're outnumbered or they feel like their voice doesn't carry enough weight. And I hate to hear that. I almost wonder if, you know, a, you know, some kind of a subcommittee makes sense that would sort of more represent interested neighborhood groups. And that might allow for people to feel like they're not just, you know, one or two people in a group of 20 people that all think the same way. I know it's really hard if you're in a group and everyone is, you know, enmeshed in some kind of subject matter and you feel like you're representing a different viewpoint, but you're just one individual. So I think we should get more creative about, you know, maybe a way to solve for that and help people feel more comfortable to get involved in this. Thanks.
I have some suggestions, but we'll take those for another day.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Appreciate the feedback before I get into the presentation because it's good to hear that. As I always communicate with the mayor and the council during this type, the public hearing process, not all of these changes are 100% supported by any one member on this group. It is collaboration, it is a consensus. We're getting to a point where we're coming to terms that we can all live with, but maybe not agree with 100%. So I don't ever want to misrepresent that at the public hearing that everyone is 100% on board with these changes because the city has hired community development or me specifically since I work on this task force to make sure that we're doing what's in the best interest for the city as well. So I have to take it from that perspective, not looking at it from a small aspect. I have to look at a broad, the broad term of change is not this narrow focus that, to your point, you may get sometimes with people that come in and serve on this committee. But I will take that to heart, and Caleb and I can certainly have some conversation around that and see how we can maybe either reach out to the group and see if they want to relieve themselves and maybe get some new fresh blood on the committee. I will mention to you, when we initially started this group, this was the list of names that I was asked to put on the list. So and certainly, I think, as we evolve as a city, we certainly want to keep that list fresh and up, updating, current, and keeping people rotated in and out. I think it makes some sense, for sure. With that, I'll go ahead and move into some of the changes tonight. So this first item here is, it actually came to me from a request from a citizen who lived in an R2 property, and she had run a daycare for many years on her property. And last year, she came to us and asked, how can she, she wanted the city to sign off on her daycare license for the state, and we told her we couldn't because we can't, that the R2 zone did not allow foreign accessory use daycare. And that I told her that we would go ahead and make that code change once we opened it up for the next round, and that's what I did. So basically, we wanted to save the resident money from moving forward on our own when we knew we were coming forward with some code changes, so we went ahead and added this as part of this round. And like I said, not many of the UDC focus group members, it really doesn't impact the way they do business. So everyone is typically on board with this proposed change. Probably the bigger one that you're all aware of, and you've acted on the last couple of times, is really the height standards in our code. And some are planning and zoning commission have, you know, struggled with some of this as well. But a city staff, we do recognize that sometimes height is not necessarily a bad thing when it's done in the right location and it's within the right context of a development and integrates well with the surrounding development. So this standard that I'm proposing this evening is really kind of step one, phase one, phase of trying, you know, we don't want to move the needle too much. But we understand when we look at some of the development happening in the city, we are seeing those height increases happening more and more along the I-84 corridor. And so this is one way where we thought we could probably maybe minimize some of that CUP exposure and try to make things a little bit easier for all of us. And so number F is actually a new item, and it does allow an applicant to go up to 100 feet within a certain commercial districts, and as long as they're within 750 feet of the I-84 right away. And I do appreciate council members reaching out to me and asking me for a graphic to show you how, how that would look and how many properties it would impact. So I can't take credit for the graphic, I have to give that credit to Brian in her office. But we took it one step further and actually decided we would add it as a figure in our code to go along with the text. So anyone that looks at that code section would correlate that to a graphic. So any questions or comments on that proposed language?
That's important.
I read this, the
Corrected, and I'm going on the record to clarify that that was an error. We will be talking about code changes through from chapters two, chapters two through chapter six. Also, as part of that public testimony, she had conveyed her concerns with, or at least wanting some more transparency as to who was on the UDC focus group. And she also has some questions around the process of that. So as you all know, historically, we've been doing this for many years together. And a few years ago, this body asked staff to put together a UDC focus group. Now, it's not a formal group like a historic preservation commission or planning and zoning commission. It's not appointed by mayor, city council. It's just a group of design professionals, citizens, city staff to get together and make sure that we have a broad range of talent to talk about future code changes. So on this particular first graphic for you here, before I get into my presentation with the UDC changes, I at least wanted to be transparent on the record tonight. That currently, these are the acting members on the UDC focus group, so that those who want more information about it know who are on it and what we do and how we do it. So essentially, we track the changes throughout the year. Usually, if we do more than one round, the first round is typically more cleanup items. And then if there's a phase two or phase three throughout the year, those are usually a heavier lift and more involvement. But this, again, the purpose of tonight's discussion is really to talk about, majority of it is cleanup items with a few new items that I want to bring to your attention. As I move into my presentation, feel free to interject or ask questions throughout. You know, this is a free flow conversation.
Mr. Mayor.
Council administrator.
Just regarding the UDC focus group, I'm not sure if that is accurate. I think it would make sense for us to circle back with the members of the UDC focus group and make sure that all of them still consider themselves members. I had a conversation with at least one individual on this list who said that she had resigned from this group. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cameron.
Yes, if we're at least starting here. No, I know some of these names and certainly there's some city staff that are on here and some folks from the building development world that we see on a fairly regular basis. How many members that are currently on the UDC focus group are not associated with building and development?
Mayor, members of the council, the, well, Lacey is part of code enforcement, but she is city staff. And then we have a real estate, Steve, I don't think is part of that, but he's still part of the real estate world. And then we have Annette Alonso, who was part of that Southern Rim Coalition. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe that is who you were referring to. I know last invite that I invited her, she declined the meeting, but did not say that she was resigning from it. So if that is the case, we can certainly, if someone else wants to participate or is willing to do that, I would encourage them to email me and let me know that. And I'm certainly happy to extend that invite to any other citizen out there that wants to be part of the group.
So, Bill, I'm gonna, Mr. Mayor, sorry.
Councilman Cameron.
I'll just provide, I think, some good feedback there for you and the department. I think to be proactive in engaging public around this. I've gotten feedback, I think, from every quote unquote citizen that has served on this committee in one form or another. And they have, it has not been a positive experience for them, which is why they have not stayed on and participate. I think that there is real value that comes with industry professionals can collaborate and engage with citizens who are uninformed. I learned so much when I was new to the city council. But it takes, I think, that extra step of really guiding them, which is something I think the community development department does a really good job of. I'm just really kind of asking and encouraging to be more proactive in how we bring people on and how we can educate them. They're not subject matter experts, and there's value in that representing Main Street. And I just think that we need to do maybe a little bit better job of providing that perspective to this focus group. Because I take the feedback from this group with a lot of confidence. And I want to have a good understanding that it's well represented by both industry and laypeople.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Scher.
I think it's important to have these conversations very openly. I've received similar feedback. And I do know that, you know, when occasionally we have had a private citizen serve on this committee, sometimes they feel that they're outnumbered or they feel like their voice doesn't carry enough weight. And I hate to hear that. I almost wonder if, you know, a, you know, some kind of a subcommittee makes sense that would sort of more represent interested neighborhood groups. And that might allow for people to feel like they're not just, you know, one or two people in a group of 20 people that all think the same way. It's, I know it's really hard if you're in a group and everyone is, you know, enmeshed in some kind of subject matter. And you feel like you're representing a different viewpoint, but you're just one individual. And so I think we should get more creative about, you know, maybe a way to solve for that and help people feel more comfortable to get involved in this. Thanks.
I have some suggestions, but we'll take those for another day.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Appreciate the feedback before I get into the presentation, because it's good to hear that. As I always communicate with the mayor and the council during this type, the public hearing process, not all of these changes are 100% supported by any one member on this group. It is collaboration, it is a consensus. We're getting to a point where we're coming to terms that we can all live with, but maybe not agree with 100%. So I don't ever want to misrepresent that at the public hearing, that everyone is 100% on board with these changes. Because the city has hired community development, or me, specifically since I work on this task force, to make sure that we're doing what's in the best interest for the city as well. So I have to take it from that perspective, not looking at it from a small aspect. I have to look at a broad, the broad term of change is not this narrow focus that, to your point, you may get sometimes with people that come in and serve on this. But I will take that to heart, and Caleb and I can certainly have some conversation around that and see how we can maybe either reach out to the group and see if they want to relieve themselves and maybe get some new fresh blood on the committee. I will mention to you, when we initially started this group, this was the list of names that I was asked to put on the list. So it, and certainly, I think, as we evolve as a city, we certainly want to keep that list fresh and up, updating, current, and keeping people rotated in and out. I think it makes some sense, for sure. With that, I'll go ahead and move into some of the changes tonight. So this first item here is, actually came to me from a request from a citizen who lived in an R2 property. And she had run a daycare for many years on her property. And last year, she came to us and asked, how can she, she wanted the city to sign off on her daycare license for the state. And we told her we couldn't because we can't, that the R2 zone did not allow foreign accessory use daycare. And that I told her that we would go ahead and make that code change once we opened it up for the next round, and that's what I did. So basically, we wanted to save the resident money from moving forward on her own when we knew we were coming forward with some code changes. So we went ahead and added this as part of this round. And like I said, not many of the UDC focus group members, it really doesn't impact the way they do business. So everyone is typically on board with this proposed change. Probably the bigger one that you're all aware of, and you've acted on the last couple of times, is really the height standards in our code. And some of our planning and zoning commission have, you know, struggled with some of this as well. But as city staff, we do recognize that sometimes height is not necessarily a bad thing when it's done in the right location. And it's within the right context of a development and integrates well with the surrounding development. So this standard that I'm proposing this evening is really kind of steps, step one, phase of trying. You know, we don't want to move the needle too much, but we understand when we look at some of the development happening in the city, we are seeing those height increases happening more and more along the I-84 corridor. And so this is one way where we thought we could probably maybe minimize some of that CUP exposure and try to make things a little bit easier for all of us. And so number F is actually a new item, and it does allow an applicant to go up to 100 feet within a certain commercial districts, and as long as they're within 750 feet of the I-84 right away. And I do appreciate council members reaching out to me and asking me for a graphic to show you how, how that would look and how many properties it would impact. So I can't take credit for the graphic, I have to give that credit to Brian in her office. But we took it one step further and actually decided we would add it as a figure in our code to go along with the text. So anyone that looks at that code section would correlate that to a graphic. So any questions or comments on that proposed language?
Councilboard.
I read this, the 750 feet requirement from I-84, that's not limited just to the HE zone.
That is correct.
Not to nerd out a little bit, but I wanted to be read like 100 feet in, you know, CC, CG, ME, and HE if within 750 feet. So is it more accurate to say a maximum building height of 100 feet shall be allowed? Properties within 750 feet of I-84 in the following zone. PC, CG, ME, and H. 750 feet applies to all four of those, right?
That would be correct.
He says what is intended.
Councilor Scher.
Yeah, I just, my concern is a fire department concern, which I'm sure everyone anticipated. Because I keep asking about the same thing every time we get a really tall building. How many stories is 100 feet? How far up can a ladder truck, truck go? Can we fight a fire in a building that's that high? And have we created standards around, you know, taller buildings, working with planning and the fire departments? So we feel comfortable that if there's an emergency, we could handle fighting a fire in a building that's that tall.
Mr. Mayor, Council Administrator, the answer to your question is roughly our ladder truck will go about 85 feet. Again, it depends on how far back from the building it is. As far as, you know, the height requirements, as we've explained, as I've talked about in the past, what protects us and what protects the occupants is the fire code and the building code. So the fire code, the building code, as the buildings, as, excuse me, as the building gets taller, the codes become more strict because of that. So people and our firefighters are protected by the fire code and the building code. So again, when you get to that 75 foot level, if there is an area that is occupied above 75 feet, now it's considered a high rise. And you have additional code requirements that kick in when you hit that magic 75 feet. So the building code and the fire code will help protect us with that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Scher.
And do you understood, so you're not going to see something stick built above that level, right? So hopefully, we'll be talking about steel and concrete. So I get that. I used to live in New York, so I understand the concept. But do you feel like, you know, maybe you're the wrong person to answer this, frankly, maybe you should be Chief Plume. But do you guys feel like you're resource appropriately? And the reason I'm asking is if we, if we'd make this change, okay, then guess what? Green light, all right, anybody that wants to build a building 100 feet will be allowed to do that in this area. And so it's like, I hope that there's been a lot of conversations between the two departments to really talk about. You know, and if you don't feel comfortable answering, you could say, hey, I need to get back to you. I don't want to, I don't mean to just like put you uniquely on this pot. You have the luck of sitting there tonight, so.
Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman Scher, I've been with the department 20 years. I'm very comfortable in my thoughts and working with the multiple chiefs that I have worked with. So as far as ladder truck standards go, 100 foot is kind of the standard out there. So resource wise, I think we are good. And then as we are developing and getting into the codes, that's where like the FAR system came in that we are now requiring. As a matter of fact, I believe the building over by Topgolf, we are having a training on August 24th. That will be the first building to become active that has a FAR system in it. So we have those fire code and building code things that will help with this. 100% comfortable with it because of the fire code, the building code cover that, and we will be good. And for your information, 2021 fire code does allow for, I believe it's 14 stories of large timber construction. So you may see a wood framed building that is 14 stories tall.
In large timber, does that constitute six by eight?
It's gonna be, it's gonna be big, big stuff.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
Appreciate Councilwoman Scher's question, because that was the same I was going to pose. So I'm glad that we had that discussion. I didn't quite hear Councilwoman Wharton's question, so I apologize if this is a repeat. But on your map, where it has the dotted orange areas that show the parcels, I'm assuming that that building still has to be within the blue area. It's not that the parcel is within that, it's that no matter how large the parcel is, the structure would have to exist in the blue area, correct?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Pearl, that was the intent. We just left the parcel lines on there just so that you could see affected properties more as part of the graphic. But Caleb and I were just talking, we'd have to finesse that a little bit. Because the reality is some of these parcels could subdivide in the future. So that configuration of that property will change in the future. So there's no way to have a graphic to capture all of those things as quickly as we're growing here. So we recognize that we just need a very simple graphic that shows that 750 foot buffer. And you fall within it, and you can take advantage of the taller height. Next code change, again, I don't know if I need to go all of these word for line by line with you. But a lot of these, again, a lot of these code changes were edited through legal and at the request of legal on some of the items they've been tackling the last year or so. And so this is one where you guys get a lot of requests for access to roadway, streets, cross access. And certainly, we want to make it clear that we really want cross access to be granted with a note on a plat versus separate recorded document. And this also goes along with that common driveway standards at the end of the graphic here that I'll be sharing with you. So both of this language does mirror up identically in code. That if it's a common driveway, we want the same thing. We want it to either be dedicated as a note on the plat, and that way, anyone that buys the property owns it. There as to what the expectation is that they can get to that. But it's not always, there may be instances where a property may not be required to be subdivided and/or or it'd be a different step in the process where a cross access would be triggered, where it would not require it to be, again, subdivided. So for example, if someone came in with a certificated zoning compliance, we can't make them put a note on a plat for an easement. So they'd have to give us that recorded document at some point. But it's just, again, to clarify it and make it align with state statute a little bit better, based on recommendations from the legal. Our next item was prohibited signage, and that's why you have code enforcement. The audience, because they're stuck enforcing the code. And this one was working closely with legal. And I can tell you, in looking at the commission rec, you probably could tell that the planning and zoning commission stayed on this topic quite a bit. But again, I did confer, confirm with legal this afternoon, this morning, that, you know, they feel like they're on solid ground with these proposed changes. But again, I don't have any other context other than that we're just trying to stop illegal activity from being advertised here in the city of Meridian. And if this council remembers, I believe there's two properties in the city of Meridian that have billboards. One will be required to remove them at some, a certain date, and one will have it for a while, depending on whenever that lease ends. But that's, that's, again, this is, this is an effort to align with code and help them.
And that's taking anything away from Mr. Neri, but Ms. Kane is also online, who was the author of many of these elements as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cameron.
Question for Mr. Neri, Mr. Parsons, or Ms. Kane, whoever wants to chime in. Who ultimately do we enforce this with? The property owner, the billboard owner, the advertiser?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilman McCann, we would have to start with the property owner, or the, excuse me, the property owner, the billboard, the billboard company, because it's their billboard that they're putting the advertising. Because they are the only ones that have the power to take it down.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Orton.
Very happy to see this change to this code. We are surrounded by state sponsored drug sales that are illegal in our state. And I think it's ridiculous that we have a code currently that we can't enforce when they advertise right in our own communities. Makes me very happy to see that we're going to put our foot down and try to adhere to the goals and objectives to protect our youth, our families by a simple change like this and keep these signs out of our city.
Mayor, members of council.
Lieutenant.
I'd also like to share that MADC was not directly involved in the changes, but in support of this, due to our prevention efforts, obviously with us being surrounded by all the states that have legalized quite a bit of things. And so Kendall Nagy is here as well to answer any questions if needed or where MADC stands with this change.
Right, next item is multifamily parking. It's essentially just aligning the parking lot standards for multifamily projects to align with the commercial standards. If you look at the changes here, you can see that actually in multifamily projects, when there was a carport parking stall, it was meant to be measured 10 by 20. And historically, we have not approved multifamily developments with that parking dimension. We've always supplied the commercial standard. So this really is a cleanup coming from community development staff to make sure that we're lining up our multifamilies with our parking standards in our commercial districts. But we are keeping the garage dimensions the same, because that is consistent with our single family dwelling units that we have, our parking standards for single family housing. So more of a cleanup on this one to align. The next item has to do with outdoor lighting. The city has a particular vendor in the community where we've received quite a few complaints, dealing with that with the mayor's office. And so based on my collaboration and trying to resolve that particular issue, there may be instances where a certain lighting is needed in order for a business to operate a certain way. And so our code may not align with that, that objective. Currently, we do allow that through alternative compliance, but because of the magnitude that this rose to, we felt very confident or strongly in it that if we are going through a public hearing, and if a product does have any lighted ball fills, that we really should daylight that or outdoor lighting, at least have that as part of that CUP process. So at least we have it on the record that whatever, for whatever reason, whatever changes or whatever lighting modification was approved, it was part of that CUP process, so that we can enforce that and at least share that with the residents that live around that particular project. I think it's pretty typical what we do. I'll give you an example for high schools. If they have any outdoor speakers, we require them to go through a conditional use process, just to kind of share that with the community. So they know there's going to be some kind of nuisance associated with Friday night football games. And so again, you can, you can see that kind of, that's the premise behind this particular code change is that we daylight it through that 500 foot radius, people have an opportunity to voice their concerns. The applicant or developer will have the ability to provide photometric testing, a little more robust testing for the lighting and lighting specs for us to analyze and look at that as part of a CUP process. And hopefully, we can have a very, very clear record on what was approved for that particular project. Any questions on that proposed change? Drinking establishments, this is a new change too as well. We recently came to our attention that we don't allow drinking establishments within 300 feet of a church or a school. There is no prohibition in state law to this particular requirement. It's something that we had in our code for many years. And so as we continue to grow, we're starting to see more and more businesses in our downtown area that are starting to approach on some of these uses or even in our commercial districts. And so we've thought that it seemed a little onerous, so we definitely wanted to change that. Still require CUP, but again, it would, now that's just it, it's not prohibited. It just requires that CUP process in order to get reviewed and approved. And as this body knows, if this type of use is within 300 feet of a school or church, and you also have to approve the beer or wine license or the liquor license because of the state regulations. So it's just mirroring up with that particular process and daylighting that, making sure that state laws align with our city codes.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, sorry.
Councilman Cameron.
Oh, maybe this is probably for Mr. Neri. Item C, drinking establishment should not be located within 1,000 feet of an adult entertainment establishment. By 1,000 feet, and why can't we make it more?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the, there is no particular case law standard. So the court's going to always look at reasonable. So 300 feet certainly could be argued reasonable. Ones I have seen have gone to 1,000, is that tends to push them out of most industrial areas. And a CUP is required as well. It really is just, the best case we can see as to what a court might do as to what's reasonable. You made it a mile or two miles or whatever. A court might think that was a little onerous. So 1,000 feet seems like a fair number. Other cities have used that number for the same purpose. But certainly, it could be more. I just, I couldn't tell you 1,500 would be also okay, or 2,000 would be okay. I don't know.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
Bill, can you elaborate on the definition of residential district? So I'm assuming that if the property was originally, it's multifamily, and it was originally in a commercial zone, let's say that's not qualified as residential district? Or, and how is that? Help us understand what constitutes residential district? Because obviously, our residences are coming in more different shapes and sizes now.
The mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Pearl, in our code, residential district are the R2, R4, R8, R15, R40 zones. So it's not necessarily residential use, that's why it says district. So if this was to come into Old Town, for example, and there was a residential use, but there was zone Old Town, we would say it doesn't apply because it's not zone a residential district, its own Old Town, which is a traditional neighborhood district, which is different. So that's how we would use that to communicate with an applicant.
Mr. Mayor. That's what I hope.
And Bill, for that residential district, if you have an R2, R4, R8, whatever, but then you have commercial. And I'm trying to figure out what does a budding mean? And you have a residential street between the commercial and the residential. What, where does that fall in something like this?
President Hoagland, we define that as well. So we do have a budding in our code, and that's a shared property line. So in that particular case, if there was a road separating the use, it's not a budding, because there's right of way separating. So it's adjacent, but it's not a budding.
Thank you.
Next item is request the staff to change. So essentially, in our multifamily standards, we do have a minimum building setback. Typically 10 feet, but if you're in an R zone, it could be up to 12 or 15 feet, depending on what district you're in. So this, what we're trying to clarify here is that this would only apply to the multifamily buildings, not necessarily the garages or the carports. Because what we're finding is, is when people design their multifamily projects, and they, they try to create taller buildings internal to the development, but they're having a greater buffer, they having to put a wider buffer around the perimeter because of this requirement for the building setback. So we want to make it clear that setback rarely is meant for the structure, not the residential structure building, not necessarily the garage.
Mr. Neri.
Just for one other thing I was going to bring up, I think I should have done a minute ago on the drinking establishment. Mr. Mayor, one other thing I was going to bring up, I think I should have done a minute ago on the drinking establishment, probably more for the members of the public. But in our code, a drinking establishment is a non-restaurant. So if it's established as a restaurant by the state, that doesn't apply. So C U P isn't going to be required for every place that serves alcohol, just ones that primarily serve alcohol and may not either serve food or may not serve a full menu of food.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holdon.
On the 10-foot bill, I know there's been discussion of this and one of development before, but you have the two building structures. But then you have some eaves that come out and is it 10-foot from building to building? Or is it 10-foot from anything from that structure like the eaves? You could make it eight feet because they stick out a foot plus on each side.
Mayor, members of the council, council, President Hoagland, it's going to depend. As you, you can imagine typically we're gonna, some, some of the planning, it's going to depend on the building code, really. That's where we default to, we'll go to our building experts and we're going to say, hey, how are you going to apply this? Because our code does allow for some sort of projection into that setback. So it's really going to come down to how is the building department going to look at this and how they're going to evaluate that? And then we're going to take that under consideration. So this next item is just renumbering it to align better in code. These were some of the changes that we made a year or so ago to some of our multifamily standards. And the numbering, sequencing got out of alignment a little bit once we went through those changes. So this is just aligning it up better in the process so people understand, interpret code better. Our next item is again a cleanup for the vertically integrated. Again, it's some of the language that I carried over from the multifamily standards. And the sentence that I actually have struck here does not align with any purpose statement that aligns with the multifamily purpose statement. So it's just removing that sentence. And then farther in this particular graphic, I've added it to the table in section 115B5 to align with this code section. So more cleanup. And again, the next item, you probably saw a lot of this public comments associated with this next line item. But this was really a request from legal to align party of record with affected person because that does align with Lupa. When you look at chapter 67 of state statute, it does mention affected person, not necessarily party of record. So this is legal's, legal came to us, asked us if we would include that as a lineup. Now we're getting a little convoluted in the public testimony is that 100-foot requirement. So just for the record, for transparency sake, I just want to make it clear that the, you as the city council empower, you dictate the process for how we approve applications. So in the planning realm, we have what we call accessory use permits. And then we have administrative certificate zoning compliance, and then we have conditional use process and for a hearing level process. In this particular case, and in that public testimony, that the written testimony that was provided, a 100-foot requirement applies to accessory use permits, not the entire public hearing process. If you were to look at the code, you'd look at the A U P process, it specifically says there's 100-foot radius that you have to notify anyone when you have customers that come to your home that are seven or more, or you have it in-home daycare. If you go through a conditional use process, there's a section of code that says you need a 500-foot radius. And that's pretty standard for any hearing level application unless the code says we, or cell tower would require 1,000 foot. So what I want to be clear on the record is the 100-foot is, is always been part of the process. It's just, it's not part, I don't want, based on some of the record, the public testimony that I read, it implied that the 100 feet wasn't enough. And it's like, it is enough for that particular application and it doesn't affect the public hearing process. So this is a completely different process than what was being conveyed in the public testimony. So I just want to be clear on that, that our code only, and the question was why the 100 feet? I don't have a, an easy answer for that. To, to Mr. Nary's point, that's the number we landed on when we adopted the code, the 100 feet seemed to be the right radius to notify this, the five or six neighbors around the property, more than likely that'll be most impacted with that in-home business. But I can assure you, when we approve an A U P or a daycare or a home occupation, our code does not change the occupancy of that structure. It's still a single-family home. So that's why it's a smaller radius and a cumbersome process for somebody to operate a business out of their home. Because again, the intent is to support that, but also not change the character of the neighborhood. And that's why that 100-foot radius is, is part of the approval process. I just wanted to go on the record and clarify that. So really, a lot of the next four or five pages were, is really just changes that came from legal to align with state code.
Councilman Sherry.
I just wanted to make sure that legal had an opportunity to review the public testimony around the bona fide verbiage and feels comfortable.
Yes, I actually asked them to look at that and be ready to answer any questions that councilman had around that. So the last thing we want to do is have people confused on the process. We don't want that. We really want them to call us and ask questions when we're going through this process. Again, a lot of this does align with, again, the same verbiage that I was just mentioning. Here's that change that I was speaking to, to table five. And then again, more cleanup items here. As you know, we made some process changes. And now when you have a DA modification going concurrently or any other application going concurrently with a C U P or alternative clients going with a C U P or annexation or rezone plat, we want to make sure we've empowered you to make the determination on that. And so we want to make sure that the findings reflect, it's not just the director acting on the alternative compliance. It's really you become the decision-making body, just like you would on any other application. And then the same thing goes with, again, whenever you have a concurrent application, again, we want to make sure there's a C U P, it's no longer the commission, it's really you approving it. And then again, there's the, the language that I mentioned at the opening of my presentation about the ingress ease, egress for common driveways and aligning that with the same section above. So as you're probably aware, you saw the, the written testimony on this particular application from Melissa and Mike Bernard. I think I've tried to address all of her comments this evening in the public testimony. Planning and zoning did again recommend approval of this application at the July 6th hearing with no modifications. So I'll go ahead and conclude my presentation and stand for any additional questions.
Thank you, Bill. Council on initial questions for staff at this time.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Sherry.
You may have missed it, but how do we plan to address the noticing kind of confusion? Sounded like, you know, the public pointed out that this wasn't accurately, just wasn't 100% accurately described. So how do we want to?
Mayor, member of the council, there, there's a couple of ways we can do it. One, again, the, the legal advice that I received, or at least council said is a scrivener's error. So we can, we can move forward and approve it as is. I've already made changes to not only tonight's hearing outline, but also the staff report. So it will be reflected in the ordinance and in the, the staff report that will be attached to that. And then I just clarified on the record. So I think as far as any noticing errors, I think we've got that pretty much cleared up on the record tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Members of the council, I, I would agree. I mean, it's, it's, I, I recognize that errors do happen. And so I, I think if, if the council is concerned, we still have a process to go through to approve the ordinance. This is really just a discussion over, are these the right changes? Are these the right ones you want us to look at? If, if you want to hold another public hearing as part of the approval process of the ordinance, you're certainly free to do that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
I'm trying to imagine this affected party presenting a request for review. Typically, the party that presents that request has to have, has to point out specific findings, elements out of the findings of fact, right? And make a statement. And make a statement requesting review of something very specific. So help me tie that together to that, that, you know, that affected party and they're not the applicant, they're not, they're not the owner. So how does that work?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, so, and that is really just the way the code is drafted. I mean, that is a state code requirement, it just states it that way. So they're going to have to show they have an interest. And then the decision maker has to agree or disagree with that they are affected. So if they disagree, they need to put on the record why they disagree and they're not an affected person, no matter that they think they are. It's, it's to avoid essentially, you're trying to approve, like Bill was saying, accessory use like a daycare, Northern Meridian, and a person who lives in South Meridian who just hates daycares says this is going to affect my life. Somebody has the ability at the decision-making level to say, I don't see how they, this could affect them. So I don't agree with them, they're not an affected party. Now bear in mind, our normal legal advice would be when in doubt, just allow them to do it. It's easier to just allow them to do it and you can still not agree with them and that's perfectly fine. So we would tend to go that way, but, but the way the code is drafted is because you could have an obscure circumstance that seems far-fetched and a very big time waste to go through when somebody clearly can't demonstrate it other than a personal dislike for the subject matter.
Mr. Mayor, follow-up question on that.
Councilman Pro.
Probably a simple question, but the assumption is that when we send out public hearing notices to properties within 500 feet, that they are affected by the, the application. So the assumption then, of course, is that that affected party, quote unquote, would come to our public hearing, make their statement, et cetera. Why then are we not using that same distance in the opportunity to request a review?
Mr. Members of council, again, I, certainly the number can change, that's not an issue. I would try to parse out between what the code defines as affected versus what we believe could be impacted. And the, the 300-foot buffers and those 1,000-foot buffers are, are a belief in the land use arena that they could be impacted by some degree. But affected is a little bit narrower by code because it is trying to determine that you actually have an effect on you, valuation of your property, impact on your life, those types of things.
Any additional questions for staff at this time? Mr. Court, do we have anybody sent by testimony on this item?
Mr. Mayor, yes, David Phillips.
David, David?
David Phillips, 1953, North Tessa. One of the things, so I'm, I'm not native here from Idaho. I'm a transplant and I'm very happy transplant, especially here in the city of Meridian because every single time I run into somebody like I did just last night as I was signing up my daughter for her freshman year at Meridian High School, they asked me, would you ever go back? Not a chance. Not only do I love Idaho and everything that it stands for, but I love Meridian and everything that it has provided for my family. My wife teaches here. I get a chance to work here, I get a chance to volunteer here. As you can see all over my hat and shirt, I am a very, very active member with the Meridian Anti-Drug Coalition. And when I'm driving down the street and I see a billboard that is blatantly advertising something that is not legal here, that I ran from in my previous state, it kind of boggles my mind. Why, why, why do we have laws if we're just going to let people tippy-toe around them because they didn't say the word? They didn't say the thing. I mean, what's going to stop someone in Nevada from putting up a billboard for all the extracurricular activities that are legal in that state? I mean, heck, Oregon, you can do anything. So let's advertise cocaine, crack, mushrooms, let's just go balls to the wall, right? One of the things that we learn when we, one of the things that we've been dealing with in prevention, when it comes to especially with this legalization of marijuana is youth perception of harm. And our youth watch us more what we do than what we say. So if we're saying drugs are bad for you, you shouldn't do drugs. The reason why marijuana is not legal in this state is because it is bad for you. But we're going to let you drive by and see a billboard every single day that says, go to Oregon and break the rules and bring back stuff that is not legal here. That doesn't make sense. So I'm extremely excited that first, I got really mad at this, but I wasn't the one who carried the torch for it. There was somebody else that was just as mad as I was that got to carry the torch for once. I'm also extremely happy to know that we've had multiple council members from his previous council and his current council that have come to meetings, who have spoken that they too think that this is ridiculous, that we, that I'm glad that we're looking at this ordinance and we're tying this up in a nice little bow. I do know that ordinances do work. I've been part of crafting two very successful ordinances, one that dealt with synthetic drug use and then one that dealt with social host ordinances. So these things can be very useful in solving these kinds of problems. Thank you.
Any other council any questions? Great, thank you. Is there anybody else present in the electified testimony? Good evening, if you say your name and address for the record.
My name's David also, David Benanetti, 417 West Pine Avenue. Mayor, members of council, thank you for letting me come tonight and share my testimony. Just as David was saying, I'm driving by and I see this billboard and it has this advertisement for Hot Box. And I knew immediately what it's advertising. Oregon's finest, right? Eastern Oregon's finest. And we know in the past few years, I'm, I'm not sure exactly how long, but Oregon has legalized marijuana. And there's no marijuana or nothing that states what this dispensary place is, what Hot Box is. But I just knew, like, you could just tell what it was. And that kind of just put it like a fire in me. It's like, why are we saying marijuana is illegal in Idaho? In Meridian, we fight to keep our kids off of drugs, but then we allow the advertisement of illegal content in our city. And what kind of fired me up was knowing we're stirring up the curiosity of our kids. And I have a nine-year-old, I got a seven-year-old, I got a four-year-old, I got a three-month-year-old. Yeah, I'm just like, I'm in the thick of it. And Mr. Kavanaugh, as you said earlier, you got a seven-year-old. And I think you would understand, you're teaching your seven-year-old good, good morals, math skills, reading skills, speaking skills. The last thing I want to do is, is try to explain to my daughter what Hot Box is. And that actually happened three weeks ago, we're driving down Fairview and that billboard sign off Fairview and Locust Grove, Hot Box. And she's in my backstage, she goes, Daddy, what's Hot Box? Don't worry about it. And I sent an email to you, Mr. Mayor, a few months ago, asking about this, why are we advertising it? And this was my concern is not just my daughter, but the youth in Meridian, their curiosity is being percolate, I guess, as they drive by it, because it says nothing about marijuana. It says nothing about drugs, but what is Hot Box? Oh, I'm going to go get on the internet, I can get on my phone, I can just look it up immediately. And not all youth in this city, or as fortunate as my girls, where they can come and talk to me and ask me. I know there's youth in this city that probably don't have parents that they can talk to. They might be isolated, they might be lonely. And when they're at school or after school, the parents are at work, they can just get on the internet and start researching. And now they're exposed to stuff that they shouldn't be exposed to, especially my girls at a young age. You know, more so high school. And I just want to share a testimony back in my days, I was caught up in drugs at 14-years-old. And it's because it's just so available. It's right there. So I just want to agree that we should get this bill, this ordinance passed that we will not allow illegal activity advertised in this city of Meridian. That's okay. Does that beep and mean I'm done?
Yes.
Okay, I've never been here, so that's great.
Thank you, David. Council, any questions? Thank you.
Appreciate it, guys.
Is there anybody else like to provide testimony on these items this evening? Is there anybody else like to provide testimony on these items this evening? Staff, any additional comments or? I think counsel is just whatever your direction is on the items that are in here. I'll just say I appreciate staff's hard work on getting here and that of the committee and appreciate the leadership of M A B C and staff on this issue. We know it's a tricky topic. It will remain tricky. Here in Idaho, it's a start. It's a stance. It's a position statement. We also know it's limitations. You know, not all, people won't understand that not every billboard, the simmering is actually in Meridian. You know, so there's limitations in certain components of this conversation, but it's an important conversation in in that context from my standpoint. So I'm look forward for the opportunity for it to be successful is the best way I can put it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
What's the process from here? I definitely would like more. Maybe, gosh, I don't even know what what to ask specifically, but just more comfort level with the building height of 100 feet. In regard to where exactly you just gave us a little map, but I would really like staff to come back with maybe some parcels of concern. Or I imagine you you looked at these specifically parcel by parcel. Or if you haven't, then you know, I wouldn't mind hearing from staff on. Are there anywhere there would be concerns in having 100 foot building for any specific reason it's right next to a single story home? You know, it doesn't fit in that particular area. I'm just hesitant to give the to sort of have this approval that runs all along this corridor in such a Broadway with without a little bit more specifics looking at. I'm not going to ask staff to go parcel by parcel. That's too much, but but I do think we need to kind of narrow down some possible challenges this will create before I'm comfortable approving it in code.
Mr. Mayor.
Is there a quick answer or do we want to go to this?
For planners, there's never a quick answer, but we're.
That's all the straight.
I would, I share the concern. I was going to make the suggestion, I'd hate to throw out some of these really positive changes that make sense to move forward. When I think there's something that maybe we want to work through, I was going to make the suggestion that we table the 100 foot height change and study that a little bit more. At least that I'd be more comfortable with that. And then, you know, maybe continue the public hearing if there are comments from the public specific to chapter six, the common driveways that wasn't noticed. I feel like it would be good to give the public the opportunity just to comment on that specifically. If they do, I know we don't have a ton of folks that do, but we have some that do. We really appreciate their feedback. So that those were my two suggestions of maybe table, you know, continue the public hearing just for item six, or at least don't move that forward yet until we can get more feedback and then the 100 foot height change, I'm just not there yet. I need to dig into that a little more. I'd also like to hear from the fire chief directly on that one, too.
Mr. Mayor.
Council.
Yeah, for staff or Bill, whatever the outcome will be, but do we need to have a resolution to approve these or what is that process for the next step?
So yeah, Mr. Members of the councils, certainly what we would, the next step we take is the ones that you want to move forward. Bill and my office will work on the ordinance language and then you'll get an ordinance in front of you.
Okay, so we do have some time to discuss this, have more conversations, do some research and then have that ordinance built based on the comfort level of everyone, the direction we want to go and then move forward from there. So.
And then, Mr. Mayor, on top of that as well, on the on the re noticing whether you want to continue this item or simply table to a future date when we're ready to bring this forward. I don't know. It's going to be two weeks or a month or whatever. Then we'll just re notice it up again with the chapter six.
So, Mr. Mayor. Oh, go ahead.
Thanks, Council President.
Councilman Caver.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I think that's that's kind of my level of comfort. I'd like. Bill, Caleb, I appreciate your work. I know this is not made overnight. This takes a lot of time and effort. I feel like we make decisions on this and then you get ready to start working to bring up the next version. You're going to bring us down the road and so appreciate your work, getting us this information, going through P and Z. This piece tonight, kind of the narrative hearing from you and the discussion from council for me is always really helpful. So I'd like to take a couple of weeks to kind of mull over, perhaps meet with staff if I have follow up questions before we make a decision. Because there's some of these that I'm, I'm not quite there on. And I'd like to get a little bit more insight and maybe some time just even just sit and think on it before, you know, making a decision right away. For two weeks, three weeks to me would be sufficient to give us all time to meet with you if we have questions and then come back for a decision.
Eric, counsel, if I can just give me my three minutes here that I'm just chomping to talk. Sorry, a couple of things. So try to take each of these a piece at a time. So to your point on the changes to chapter six, that is not new language. That is just something that's always been in code. It's just defining it a little further. So I'm not sure if you're going to get any other additional comment on that particular change in the common drive because it's not changing anything to the standards. All it's saying is is we want it either. We want to dedicate it by a plat. If there's no other unless that's that's really, it's a simple change. That's aligning with another section of code. As far as the height, we did look at that, to be honest with you. I and I respect that you guys want to digest this because we want you to digest it frankly, because this is citywide. This is not just one section of our town. This applies citywide when we change the law and change code. But what we, the reason, and that's why I said we took it a small piece at a time because we didn't want to open it up to the Eagle Road corridor. We didn't want to open it up to Overland Road. There's many different corridors in our community that could probably stand to have taller buildings. We're just not there yet. We haven't done that parcel by parcel deep dive to see if it makes sense for us to do that. But the reason why we chose the I 84 corridor is because we've had people come and talk to us about their properties and their zone commercial. We've had people in the 10 mile area. They're already zoned commercial. They already have buildings that exceed the code requirements. So yes, we are very methodical when we looked at it about the only residential properties that you have along. There's a a subdivision on Linda Road there in the city that came in back in the 90s. That's along there, but the rest are kind of county enclaves that have a potential for mixed use designation or a commercial designation that will change at some point into the future. So that's the reason why we took a smaller bite at this and said, let's start with one corridor and see if it works. And if not, we can change code. But again, I I understand your concern. If you want me to go line by line. Councilman Kavner, if you want to come talk to me in my office and vet these out and get a little bit more information behind that, I'm happy to do that. But I just at least wanted to give you some of that information as how we got to that at 750 and then specifically along that corridor.
And Joe, if you could help me with the code. I know you mentioned that that's going to go up to big frame, but stick frame is six stories or seven stories? I think it's seven.
I'm not sure on the current code, Mr. Mayor. I just know with the 2021 code, it they allow that large timber to go up to, I think it was like 14 stories.
I think it's seven. That was my recollection of why we got to this rough 100 foot because you can't do eight, eight, eight stories, 100 feet is not practice, is not. You really can't do in that. That's why I'm looking at John and he's shaking his head. You can't do eight stories. So seven stories is your likely max, which aligns with the current code of timber allowable. That's kind of how that number came in there, but whether it's 100 or 96 or 90, I don't know. You do seven stories and 90 feet. Close, if if we want to align it to those type of principles as compared to 65, which is, you know, what it is now, which is not really aligned to others. At some point in time, someone said, that's the height that we want. I don't have a better answer than that. And that's what people have to have to deal with is like, you know, decisions that people made before Caleb was even here. And that's going back like 21 years. If you look at it that way. So anyways, just just to put some context into where that 100 foot rationale and at least my conversations with staff kind of landed at for whatever value and purpose that is, but hearing from the chiefs and more, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to say also that 75 feet is kind of the magic number. Once you get above 75 feet and you get into now, it's considered a high rise cost, as John can probably attest. Can considerably skyrockets because of the building code and the fire code requirements. So that's where we end up with these 74 feet, nine and three quarter inch tall buildings. Because once you hit 75 feet, they really go high because of the requirements.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Scherer.
Yeah, and I think, you know, right from a city perspective, I'd, I'd love to come at it from the perspective that you know, we talked to the fire department, here's how far up a ladder truck can go. And get kind of crystallized on that because at least in my mind, that that's a pretty easy thing to anchor myself to like, okay, we know a ladder truck can get to that. Or at least within reasonably within that. So I just like to get a little more detail on how far up a ladder truck can reasonably get to if it's parked at a normal distance from the building and that should all be kind of outlined as well, right? I mean, that I assume is part of the code in terms of like where the fire truck could actually park in order to make it to that distance. So I just feel like we should be not necessarily solving for the average of what economically works for the development community. I don't think we are. I think it should be that we're grounded in this because this is our perspective on what we could safely service and what we think is appropriate for the area, right? So I think that the those two pieces are the pieces that we just have to tie up. But I totally appreciate what you're saying because it's like, if there's just this arbitrary standard that's been set, we're doing the right thing, I think, by trying to find what the right standard should be. More work to do.
And it may include a little demonstration because that you're typically not trying to put people on the top of the building. You're trying to get to a point and the level is going to be down, not at 100 feet, what people, even if you need to do that. But don't, don't get, I'm not the firefighter, so I'm not going to pretend to play one with anything else. That's your hood.
Mayor, just maybe a couple of comments on on that one in particular, and I think we're comfortable with the ordinance re noticing and doing some of these other things, but I do want to also address the building side of that. We did consult with the building official as well as fire. And I think we'll rely on Chief Onjerno to bring Chief Bloom into this conversation more. I have to assume he's been consulted to some degree. But we'll make sure you're comfortable with any changes. But I did just want to bring in the other life safety element of that again, which is the building code. And we did have a sit down with them as well. Your, your comments previous have not fallen on deaf ears. We are trying to coordinate this. And the 75 foot habitable height is part of that. So it's the even the climbing gym, I'm forgetting their name. Have had conversations about that building. It's like, well, our building's taller, but there's no one above a certain point. So a demonstration or those, you know, real life things we have talked about. Not saying this is perfect and and it will be a challenge. I kind of shook my head when Councilman Pro asked if went parcel by parcel. I did not know. Mr. Parsons actually did that because I did not, but I did look at it and went 750. Okay. And and to his comment. I think the struggle there is going to be, you know, you've got existing residences that are there that are close by, even some single level in the county. Largely, we try to protect basically that 750 overland. There's nothing in the city that's single family residential necessarily between Overland and the freeway. We do have some county subdivisions or 100 feet. I won't use affected or impacted, but they'll know that there's a 100 foot tall building there. But the city's plan is a lot for a lot of those properties to redevelop over time. So that transition, how much are you going to transition to urban versus protect something that's a one acre or two acre in the county? It's going to be difficult. I mean, there's not going to be, and I think there's going to be flavors of ice cream there, right? Some may like it, some may not. And but to Bill's comment, we have seen quite a bit of you are, the land is getting scarcer and more expensive and you need to go vertical, particularly on the interstate corridor. And that's one of the things where we looked at it and said, is it perfect? It's a better fit in some areas than others. But this is a nice, clean dimension that for the most part, at least at this point, staff says, we think this is right for our community. Again, we got more of that conversation. I wanted to just give you a little bit more of the context from my perspective and the work that I did and some of the conversations on the U D C focus group. And anyways, it's all stopped there.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilone Pro.
I don't know exactly how it would play out. But I would also have concern that we have 100 foot or close to 100 foot buildings, just salt and peppered here and there individually, standing on their own. And I just don't like that from just a pure, like this is how we you know, develop our city standpoint, but that has nothing to do with code. I just don't want the city to look that way because I think it's unattractive and I don't think it is beneficial. I don't know if that's a risk that that we would take by doing this is just 100 foot building here and a quarter mile down the road, we have another individual building because you, because we do have these distance limitations.
The mayor, counsel, I just, I just want to go on the record and let you know that the H E zone does allow a 90 foot, 95 foot tall building right now. So and we have some H E zone property in 10 mile. So it's not really much of an increase. It's not really incentivizing that zone very much, to be honest with you. But where maybe incentivizing the zone CG and the ME zones are 65 feet. So that's where that 45 foot or 35 foot increase could be pretty significant in those particular zones. And then in the CC zone, it's 50. So that's, those are probably the three critical zones that I could see taking advantage of the taller buildings. H E is probably not, not going to get much from that. Just least wanted to let you know that's what the current code is right now.
All right. So do we have a path forward?
Mr. Mayor, one quick question for legal. If somebody were to install a billboard for illegal activity a week before this passes, would they be allowed to keep it?
Yes. Yes, they would because it's because it's an existing condition and there's no permit required. I mean, there's no additional permitting required. It might be problematic. I mean, we certainly have to look at it. We certainly would contact them, but whether or not we could enforce that your land use code against them might maybe more problematic.
The reason for that question, if if this were to be tabled for further discussion, could we carve that out? Bring that part forward faster. Certain understanding the remainder might have further discussion. I don't know. It all needs to be continued. There's some risk that we might miss an opportunity.
Certainly, we can, we can bring it forward in two weeks if you'd like.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Let me pause for one second. Bill, has this been through the P and Z's? Oh, yes, it was. It was on, it was on the record. That's right. As long as it's been through P and Z, we can bring it forward anytime.
Mr. Mayor.
That's one whole.
Ask staff then. So what what timeframe do you feel comfortable with? There will have to be re noticing. And I mean, if we can do it in two weeks and have council discussions, question, follow up to questions and re noticed and come back. Is that, is that doable? And it's clerk, I don't know what our schedule looks like for in a couple of weeks off the top of my head, but and for your workload too. I mean, there's, will, will that, will that fit?
Yeah, I mean, so mayor, members of the council, President Hoagland, yeah, this is pretty much done. Like you said, it there's some tweaks or modifications, happy to take those suggestions this evening and make those happen, but a lot of it's really already baked. We're just waiting for your approval.
Okay, and Mr. Clerk.
More burden on me.
Mr. Mayor, President Hoagland. Want to be clear, if you're asking to re notice before a new discussion, the earliest would be September 12th. If you're wanting to, I just didn't follow quite what you were looking to.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Clerk, yes. Yeah. What would be the earliest that we could with re noticing is September 12th. So so Mr. Borton, September 12th would be the earliest with re noticing. And I think you raise a good, good point on on that.
Missed that. Yeah, I missed that. Are we required to re notice the entire thing or are we doing it because we want to? Yeah. Sorry, you don't need to re notice this. You can bring forward an ordinance from this discussion in two weeks for approval. And then looking through the code, we could enforce it now. So. Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
I, I understand the reason for the continuance, but as to that section, I'd be inclined to ask legal to bring that forward in two weeks and allow it. Carve it out, act.
carve it out, act in two weeks while the remainder continues for further information and discussion.
Lacey.
Lacey, code enforcement. I had a question in regards to the answer for the boards, the bulletin, billboards. If they're up before the code changes, they would not be enforceable?
As I reread the code, Lacey, I think.
Okay. And then my question would be regarding electric readers that are change copy as opposed to a permanent standing.
Standard will be the same.
So they, we would be able to enforce on them. Thank you.
It's my reading too. All right, as a firefighter, now I'm an attorney. What else do you want me to be tonight?
Well, you did get a pay raise.
Mr. Mayor. Sorry, Councilwoman Strager, would you like the chief to be here the twenty-second or the twelfth, or do you want to talk to him? At a time, how, I just want to make sure I get my bearing straight.
Mr. Mayor.
That's what I'm saying.
Oh, yeah, I, any of those dates is fine. I'd like him to be here in a public meeting to address, you know, whether he's resource for this and his concerns on the maximum height and you know, yeah, just, I don't think that's, I mean, it really depends on what he has to say, right? If that's a short conversation or a longer conversation, I don't know.
Understood. I just wanted to make sure I got clarification. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go back to, we have a plan moving forward. Do we, are we closing the public hearing or are we redoing everything again?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland. My understanding is we'll be coming back with ordinance change for the billboards in two weeks. That will be on our calendar. And then September twelfth, we'll have the rest of it. I'll counsel time to ask any further, you know, bring up, do some research, whatever the time, want to do within that timeframe. And, and I would assume we'd leave the public hearing open. Or do we need, we can just leave it open because if we don't have to renotice, we can just. You are going to renotice portions or?
I guess what Mr. Mayor members of the council, I thought the desire was to renotice because of chapter six, although Bill did say it was a fairly minor. You want to renotice, that would be the September twelfth.
So re- notice, continue the public hearing to a day certain and have the notice effect for that and do the other stuff separately quicker. Does that work? Yes. Okay, whoever wants to make those motions. I can't meet as the councilman. Mr. Mayor. Councilman Hoagland. I move that we continue the public hearing for ZOA twenty twenty-three dash zero zero one, with the exception of the billboard changes that will be brought forth in ordinance form in two weeks. And that the remainder will come before us in this continued public hearing on September twelfth. A motion, a second, do I have any discussion? If no, I'm favoring same five by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed nay. The ayes have it and the public hearing is continued. Do we need to take another break? Are we good to move forward? All right, then next item up is item eight, public hearing for twenty twenty-three comprehensive plan policy update CPAT H twenty twenty-three dash zero zero two nine. We'll open this public hearing with staff comments.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for having me here tonight. I thought short agenda, I could talk your ear off for a little while, but now I'm tired. We're here to talk to you about some policy updates, which is a comprehensive plan text amendment. It should look all very familiar to you. We're mostly formalizing what we discussed in May. While the presentation on policies will be short, I do want to plug additional next steps after the recommendation. Briefly, this is an overview for the presentation. We'll cover some process, the, we'll cover some background, the review process, our recommendation and next steps. The review process started by talking with the directors, having the department's review provide updates and then provide an opportunity to ask council for any direction they'd like to receive. On May second, we reviewed this work with council and then discussed some areas of uncertainty generally around the growth priority areas. We took your feedback and then submitted for a public hearing for a comprehensive plan text amendment. Playing any planning and zoning, reviewed these changes on July sixth and recommended them to council with no changes. There are fifty policies, policy changes, some of these fall in multiple categories. Two have minor text modifications, just grammar. Sixteen have priority changes, fifteen with lead and thirty-seven support. I'm not going to go through all of these with you. You've seen them except for several that were reassigned to economic development. And they're all detailed in the staff report. I am more than happy to talk through any questions you may have or that may have caught your eye. And I'm going to pause there in case there are.
Mr. Mayor.
That's one pro.
Are you, I'm assuming we're not going through these one by one.
Oh, I'm going to move on to the recommendation next.
Oh, okay. Can I ask a big picture question then before we do that?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, please do.
Thank you. I understand that some of the intent of this is because economic development has moved under the mayor's office. The one thing that wasn't clear to me on the recommended changes are the, you know, which, which support, well, even with the leads and the support, why some are mayor's office entirely and some are just economic development? Does it just have to do with who within, like which staff member is going to be involved in it? Or I assume when it says economic development, it means the economic development staff. When it says mayor's office, it means any assigned staff member within the mayor's office. Was there like a rhyme or reason on that? And if so, can you help me understand that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Perro, there were many rhymes and reasons for that. Then, as you noted, the economic development team is situated under the umbrella of the mayor's office. However, economic development is physically located in community development and works very closely with community development staff. There was a desire to maintain some of that prominence sort of the, as a, as a relationship that works between two different groups. And we just honored that. It could have gone any number of ways and planning just was one to be supportive of what they wanted. So when it says mayor's office, it's because it is actually, you know, strategic plan, mayor's office sort of topics. When it says economic development specifically, it really is economic development team.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
One that caught my eye was three point oh three oh two D and the change from implementing strategic growth areas to maintaining strategic growth areas. So are we, you know, planning to sort of formally publish that? I've been a big proponent of us doing that. And I think that's important. I feel like I have a crystallization of where those areas should be. But I just wanted to talk about that change and sort of understand. So the, do you feel like you have good buy-in on where those growth areas are and help me understand that?
So, Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll take this one. The slide that Brian pulled up should look familiar. We used very, very similar, if not the same slide in May. When we had the conversation and my notes from that conversation were to sort of back off the more aggressive and take a more passive approach, not exactly how I wrote it down. But, but something to that effect. So any of the changes that we see there from implementing to maintaining was again, and maybe passive is the wrong word. But I'm somewhat comfortable in it, the last part of your question there. I think there is an understanding from the development community and even to some degree from our citizenry about where the next wave of growth is anticipated and expected based on our utilities and our roadways, our response times, some of those things that you talked about a few years ago that aren't codified, that there isn't an official map, but there is a general understanding of things on this side of the line. It is okay to develop and that is not quite ready to develop yet. I can't speak for everybody, but I think there's a general understanding from those groups that I just broadly said, I think understands. You will get that limit pushed though, and we don't have a black and white on this side of the line is a no and on that side of the line is a maybe. In fact, there's applications you'll see that will test that boundary coming up. But that was the direction I heard in May was we don't need to have that map. If that's changed, we can do something more explicit in that and look towards adopting a real map that says, nope, here's the line. And until we build this fire station or this roadway is improved or whatever those metrics are, we're open to doing that. That's just not the feedback that I heard in the spring.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Totally understood. Now, I think I was misinterpreting the use of maintaining. I think what you mean is you're maintaining the implicit understanding of where strategic growth will occur. That is not the direction I feel that we should go. I am more a proponent of adopting something more formal, a map perhaps even that would be more explicit. But I think I, you know, I maybe a bit of an outlier on that. I know there are differences of opinion, but I think that's a missed opportunity. And that maybe providing those bright lines could be a really good way to help focus those conversations of where people want to push the boundaries. So just wanted to say that.
Mr. Mayor.
I think council will call staff. I wasn't present at the main meeting. I was out of town, but I had a chance to watch and feel comfortable participating tonight. I share a little bit of, I think, Councilmember Strater's opinion. I think that there are certain spots that people know. But the further you kind of move past that epicenter is when it gets a little more gray. And so I, I'm not belaboring the past. This was not something I was super warm about because I think some of the ambiguity that's associated with it. I would feel more comfortable if there was something that was more formalized with kind of some specific boundaries. I think that gives our neighbors, the development community, some better understanding about what we're intending behind it. And anytime we have the opportunity to remove as much ambiguity as possible, it's a win for.
Mr. Mayor, I will just, I'll say, you know, we can work with, work with that feedback too. I know that's too, isn't a majority of council, but if that's something we can start to bring that topic back up. Brian just brought to my attention all. I think some of that is you do want to have some flexibility that if the line is too bright, maybe you can make that call, although you want to send a message too. So I'm not quite sure where that lies. But we do have, and what we're looking at putting in our staff reports. So the staff report template is also something we're working on right now is the service accessibility tool. So it does already incorporate that tool, which we're trying to use more and publicize more. Really does use that red, yellow, green kind of go caution, stop type of a system for scoring parcels for their availability of to be annexed and developed in Meridian. So it uses things again, like the five-minute goal of response times from fire, the roadway capacity adjacent to a project. Even pathways are in that tool. And so that scorecard, if you will, of how a parcel scores you even have. So it doesn't tell you that you have to pass it or fail it, but it shows you how are we doing in each of these elements of service that we provide to a community, even some of them are in our services, right roads. So I just wanted to also make that point. And again, we can talk with the mayor's office and see what that looks like to make more formal, some type of a growth boundary map. We also do have, I'll just note quickly in the city strategic plan, some language that is real similar to this too. So I'll work with Vincent as well and some of the tactics and objectives even in the strategic plan to see what that looks like. And we can bring something back maybe at a workshop or something and see what that looks like.
And one thing to add, consider is that if you are going to do good on that road, you know, do LEDs and CID's fall within that because if they're coming in to fix all the problems outside of that growth boundary, is that okay? You know, I know there's, there's city services to go along with that, but that's been some of our conversations at this point. But if someone says, I'm going to come in, I'm going to solve all those problems that are your line. Does that matter? Does that not? With that, the LED CID's is something we've recently been exploring. Just so we understand that as a tool, in case something in development community ever approaches us with something that they want to do. So. This or the, for the conversation.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, are there any additional questions you have or should I move on to the requests? So this is the request before you tonight to approve the policy, policies as recommended both by city staff and the planning zoning commission. If you feel like you want to modify some of those, that is of course your purview and we'll do what we need to do. And then just plug one more, but next steps.
Council. Questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
Good question about four point zero five point zero three D. And taking the priority regarding public support for preservation of open space as part of a permanent land trust from very high to low, just want to understand the background on that.
So, Mr. Mayor, maybe I'll start that conversation too. Unlike Councilman Gaviner, I did not review the May minutes when we had this conversation and I don't have my notes in front of me unfortunately. But in talking with the mayor's office, because you can see that's one of the main changes basically that was proposed was previous community development director, this was something he was charged with doing. City survey has since happened. So we have a new director. We have a new, some newer results from the citywide survey. This did not seem to be as high of a priority. So I won't say it's not a priority. It certainly is a priority for some in our community. But it did not rise to that level of being a high priority. So it's still in the comprehensive plan. It was just something that went from urgently figure out if we can do a foothills levy and, you know, let's, let's to more of a, yeah, if there's an opportunity, let's explore that. But it wasn't the highest priority. So really that's the change is it change from community development to the mayor's office and from a very high priority to low. Didn't change any of the words with it, just the order of its priority.
Any additional questions? Correct. This is a public hearing. We do have one person online and one person in the room. Is there anybody that would like to provide testimony on this item? Got a no there. Nobody online is raising their hands. So do I have a motion to close the public hearing? Or would you like to continue this for for the conversation and discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro. A motion, a second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? If not, I'm favoring same five by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The ayes have it. The public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
That's one pro.
I move that we approve the twenty twenty-three comprehensive plan policy update H two zero two three.
The 2023 comprehensive plan policy update H two zero two three zero zero two nine.
A motion of second. Is there a discussion? If not, is this a need to be a roll call? If not, I'm favoring same by by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed nay.
Aye.
Five ayes, one aye or die, ayes have it. And the item is agreed to. Next item up is item nine ordinance.
Mayor, I'm sorry. Brian did have a couple of next steps. He tried to. If you don't mind, just some of the things on hers work plan. We want to point, and I know it's late, but if he can have just a minute or two to run through that.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, I will abbreviate. So we have some mixed use changes coming. I've mentioned this before. We've since drafted those. We've been working with. Some professionals that have helped us to review those. The responses so far have looked positive. I haven't dived into those yet, but those are moving forward. The reason for the changes because our mixed users are frequently missing a lot of the things that we need that exacerbates traffic. Traffic's a big one. Those, after we work with them and make changes, we're going to be bringing them back out to the broader public and, and some of our other partners. And then we will be processing another comprehensive plan text amendment for you to review. I will say a lot of that's going to include a lot more graphics. We're proposing in a, in a new appendix for the comprehensive plan. That's almost all visuals. Intention for that is just to help people who maybe don't. Understand plan, a planner speak to, to grasp what we're trying to do. And hopefully we'll see some applications that, you know, especially with applicants who want to do better, they'll, they'll provide something we're looking for, that having to do revision after revision after revision. So. We're not changing, we're not changing the vision of the comprehensive plan. We're not changing what we're asking for. We're trying to do a better job of explaining that. So. That's the first one. We have additional policy review. So what we just talked about next year, those are going to be more substantial though. So we've, it's been four years since adoption of the comprehensive plan. This will actually look at text changes to, you know, is that one relevant anymore? Should we get rid of it? Are we seeing things that we need to add because we're missing things? That will include more public outreach than what, for example, I just mentioned in the mixed use stuff. We also have future line use map cleanups coming to quite a few areas that we can just. Make that map look a little bit more relevant to what's actually occurring along with some area of city impact adjustments. Some possible development of subarea work. This is with economic development, big E, big D, and also in the mayor's office. Some of the focus of as industrial technology and business centers. And then a plug for the fields area. That plan is still active, still hoping, personal plug, we're going to park out there somewhere before it's all lost. But more to, for you guys, there's a desire, part of the, part of the approval of that document was basically committing to. Inventory and keeping track of, of entitlements out there and making sure that development out there understood what was entitled and that what we're trying to get so they can propose something that's in alignment with that. So when you're reviewing applications for projects out there. And not that anything's been done wrong or, or gone awry already, but when you're reviewing applications out there, just know that. We're going to be keeping a list of those on the website. So other applications can see those, use them as example for inspiration and then propose those again to us. So. More transparency there just because that's what the plan says to do. So FYI. And happy to stand for any questions you may have.
Council, any questions for Brian on those items?
Mr. Mayor.
That's one board.
Robust next steps. That's a lot. Understanding though, it is perpetual work intentionally. So very well done. And your comment about the, the illustrations as part of your next steps, I think is a really valuable tool also for the public, you know, when we, we do. See opportunities to have those illustrations of comp plan principles help. Educate the public in how the guiding principles try to steer development in a particular area. Now the development community might get it more, but. That's certainly probably part of your. Your review as you develop those, see how this, our citizens benefit from those components in the comp plan. They seem, it seems to help inform their. Use of it when they come participate in these hearings. So I'm glad to hear you have that on the radar.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavan.
To you, Brian, the birthday boy, Mr. Mayor, you guys are leading with innovation and thinking about ways that you can better communicate to the public and to us and. Think adding those illustrations and images. Thanks for thinking of those things. Thanks for leading on those things. All three of you. Appreciate it. I know.
Mr. Mayor, can I piggyback just real quick on, on that? So.
It's your birthday.
This is my party now. If you do, you know, traveling, we're, we're trying, part of what we're trying to do is get them to be relatable too. So we don't want. These, these exhibits to be from Europe and, you know, grandiose is fine, but if you, you know, in the Northwest, if you're aware of some things, we don't have a whole bunch in Meridian, right? But if there's some things where people can relate, oh, I've been to Bend. I know where that makes you. Send us some pictures, send us some projects. Those are the types of things we're trying to include here. So it really does bring home what we're trying to do.
All right. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to item nine, ordinance number 23 dash two zero two seven. That's a quick read, this orders by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's an ordinance related to modern crafts when Franklin H 2022 zero zero seven nine. Enacting the southwest quarter of the southwest quarter of section 10 township three north range one west Boise Meridian Ada County Idaho. More particularly described in exhibit A, rezoning 11.47 acres of such real property from R U T to R 15. Zoning district directing city staff to alter all applicable use and area maps as well as official zoning maps and all official maps depicting the boundaries in the zoning districts of the city of Meridian in accordance with this ordinance. Writing the copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Treasurer, the Ada County Recorder and the Idaho State Tax Commission is required by law repealing conflicting ordinances and providing an effective date.
Thank you, council. You've heard this order spread by titles. There may that will like a readiness and tyranny. If not, no emotion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
Move the, we, we approve ordinance number two, three dash two, zero, two, seven. Second.
A motion of second to approve. Ordinance two, three dash two, zero, two, seven. Is there any discussion? If not, correct color rule.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Schrader.
Aye.
Overton.
Aye.
Perrow. Cavan. Borton.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye. All eyes, motion carries. Council, if you have any future meeting topics? Or do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, all favors combined by saying aye.
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 Those day, the ayes have it, we are adjourned.